Ladies and gentlemen, have a seat. I'd like to welcome you to the December 13th Placer County Planning Commission meeting. If you would all rise and join me in the pleasure of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Proceed with the roll call.
Commissioner Nader.
Here.
Commissioner Moss.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Rukuchy.
Here.
Commissioner Denial.
Here.
Commissioner Sevison. Commissioner Gray.
Here. Thank you. We'll now hear from Mr. Johnson, planning director, if you would be so kind.
I had a meeting on December 10th. One of the items on that agenda was a review of the Placer Vineyards project. As much has changed since the Placer Vineyards project was approved in 2007, the owners group has been working with county staff to look for ways to make the project more viable as it moves forward into the development process. One of the issues that the board considered were some policy changes to that project. When the project was first approved, it was anticipated that every public facility out there would be a turnkey facility. That is, the applicant would construct and turn over the facilities to the county. It's very different from what typically happens. Typically, the applicant pays an impact fee, and then the county collects those fees and ultimately constructs the facility. So what the board considered was a policy change to go back to a fee-based program that we do throughout the balance of the county, and the board concluded that was an appropriate way to go. We also looked at the possibility of joint use of parklands with school districts. Instead of having separate facilities for the county and for the schools, is there an opportunity for the joint use of those facilities? And the board also concluded that was an appropriate direction for the project to move. There were several other policy decisions, and the board gave direction to staff to move forward and work with the owners group to find solutions so that we can move this project forward to the development stage. Also at Tuesday's board meeting, the board took action to approve a fuel sale and delivery agreement for the Cabin Creek biomass facility. This is just another step in the process to bring that biomass facility to reality, and staff was very encouraged to see that process move forward. With the Christmas holiday, there will not be a planning commission meeting on December 26th. Your next meeting will be on January 9th. Items that we have identified for that agenda right now include the election of officers for 2014, a review of the Sheridan Community Plan, a workshop to let you know what's been happening out in the community of Sheridan, a zoning text amendment for transitional and supportive housing, and a hearing on the draft DIR for the North Star Mountain Master Plan. This will be an opportunity for the planning commission to receive public comment on that draft DIR. The last thing I wanted to mention to you, as we're starting to see more development activity come in, we're starting to look at some staffing options to address those changes. A lot of those, the activity we're seeing right now continues to be up in the Tahoe area. And so in working with the county executive officer, a decision has been made to get a planning manager, an agency manager, up in that Tahoe office to oversee the planning, building, and engineering operations for the county out of that Tahoe office. Paul Thompson will be going up to Tahoe starting in the first of the year to oversee those county operations. Paul will be working with Peter Kratz from Public Works and Jennifer Merchant from the county executive office to provide that full management oversight for the Tahoe office. As a result of Paul's relocation, we will be having a recruitment to fill the deputy director of planning services role here in Auburn, and we hope to have that filled just after the first of the year. That concludes staff's comments, available for any questions the commission may have. Thanks.
There's not on the agenda today. Do I see anyone? I do not. All right, thank you. In that case, we will proceed to our first item on the agenda, the tentative subdivision conditional use permit for the Belcara subdivision.
Thank you. So today, I'm here to discuss the Belcara subdivision. The applicant is requesting approval of a tentative subdivision map and a conditional use permit to allow for planned unit development on a 169.2 acre property, which would allow for 39 units. The property is located approximately eight miles from the intersection of Forest Hill Road and Lincoln Way in the Auburn area. It is located to the northwest of Forest Hill Road in this location here. The project site, again, it's located off of Forest Hill Road, and it is, consists of a great deal of topography, is covered with conifers and mixed conifer oak woodland, and it also contains approximately 25 acres of wine vineyard. Site zoning for the property is residential forestry with a 2.3 acre minimum and a planned development of .44 units per acre. And then it also has a 4.6 acre minimum and a 20 acre minimum on the property. The subdivision is the planned development, which allows for clustering of, excuse me, residential lots in a portion of the area and then requires an open space area. This project has 39, excuse, sorry about that, has 39 units, and it's clustered in the east side of the property here. The units range from about .83 acres to somewhere in the six acre range. Each residential lot includes a building envelope, and in this area where the wine vineyards are, approximately 12 acres of the wine vineyards actually in the whole area and the whole subdivision will be removed to accommodate the residential lots. And then the areas where there are residential lots in the winery area, the homeowners association will work with a company that will manage the vineyards in those areas so that they're compliant with the residential lots. The property actually has approximately 93 acres of open space, which is here, and they are also putting in a connection to the Long Point Fuel Brake Trail, which comes in about here. It's right there, actually, and then it's traversing through the trail to another connection over here. And then this, all of this area is open space. There were three wetlands identified on the property, and they're all located and protected within this open space area. This is the project site illustrating where it is based. Basically, this is just showing the general plan and zoning of the area. And what I wanted to illustrate here is that this is the last residential zoning towards Forest Hill, where the remainder over here is open space. We had, let me just forward here. The project history included a negative declaration that was prepared in 2011, and the planning and development review committee received comments on that mitigated negative declaration. It was also taken to the Forest Hill forum for comments. And after that, we modified the mitigated negative declaration and then recirculated it again in 2011. We again received several comments on the project, and we made one more modification to the minor, or the mitigated negative declaration in order to address all of those And we have received further comments on the staff report and the last mitigated negative declaration, and many of these, well, a summary of these issues are visibility, impacts to the visibility of the North Fork of the American River Canyon, impacts to the visibility from Interstate 80, tree removal screening that was mentioned and is included as a mitigation measure in the mitigated negative declaration, traffic issues related to ingress and egress and to traffic impacts to Forest Hill Road. These, basically, what the concern is, is safety coming in and out of the property with a request for a right turn lane and a way to turn left out of the subdivision. There's a concern there. Those concerns were addressed by adding a shoulder on the right-hand side turning into the property. And then there's also a lane coming out of the property when you turn left that will allow you to kind of merge into traffic. And this here is an illustration of the visibility of Interstate 80, which is a comment that we've received on the staff report. And it is accurate that we can see in the project site from Interstate 80, which is approximately right here. This portion here is actually Forest Hill Road, and around this area is where the project site is. The mention was that this can be viewed from Interstate 80 between the Bowman Road exit sign and the Bell Road exit sign. So went out to look at the area here, and it is rather a distance away from Interstate 80. It's also pretty hard to see unless you're looking for it as you're driving by. But we did do a visibility analysis from Interstate 80, and that's what this is right here. So you can see from the Bowman area, you can see the project site, and that's what that's illustrating. And then this right here just shows the amount of visibility from Interstate 80. So the green and yellow areas are lesser impact than the red areas down here. So most of this is yellow and green, which means that it's a lower visibility. There were also suggestions that a mitigation measure in the initial study requires screening on sites that are near the North Fork of the American River Canyon and which are most likely to impact the North Fork Canyon. There's also a requirement for a 300-foot shaded fuel brake around the perimeter of the subdivision, which will also be entered into CSA monitored by the homeowners association. And this is an illustration of a shaded fuel brake. As you can see, the understory of the forest area and the tree canopy has been removed, but the tree canopy remains. And on a sloping property, there's a great deal of screening based on the vegetation that's moving down the hill. And then this is an illustration of another shaded fuel brake on the, on the side of the canyon where Rubbish Point is located. And what you can see here is a portion of the 300-foot fuel brake, and right here is the end of the fuel brake. So after this is done, 300 foot out from the perimeter of the project site, this is what will be located behind it. So it still gives quite a bit of screening to the property. Another issue that came up with the mitigated negative declaration is concerns about the property being located with the important view shed of the Forest Hill Community Plan. This important view shed is, there's a map of it in the community plan, and it basically illustrates an area and has suggestions that we minimize impacts to the view shed as much as possible. Well, the property extends just about here, so a portion of the building envelopes are within the important view shed area. And those properties there, they have a mitigation measure that requires that the residences that are located on those properties be single-story, and that we ensure that there are screening on the property. And in order to ensure that, we are requiring by a condition of approval that those residences come in for review before we issue the building permit. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
I have one, you were talking about review before they come in for building. Is there a condition overall for approval of this that probably is similar up to the Tahoe Basin where color palette of houses and roofs and stuff are very neutral, where they blend in? It's like if you're going 267 up, you really don't see a lot of houses in there unless you pull over to the side and you're specifically looking. Is there a condition like that on this project?
There is. This condition specifically calls out for properties that are located near the canyon, and we are requiring neutral colors, and that's the single-family, or excuse me, single-story requirement. But the remainder of the subdivision is subject to design guidelines that have been prepared for the subject, or for the subdivision, and that will be maintained by the homeowners association.
Thank you.
Yeah, in reviewing the package, I was a little confused. It appears that the road system that's being put in is going to be a county-maintained road system?
That's correct.
Okay. And there are some private roads in there too that are not, or Lot D, is that all county-maintained?
From what I understand, it's all county-maintained.
Okay.
Melanie, the important view shed area there, most of that is part of the open space of the subdivision?
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Opponents, if we would, for the project?
Applicant?
Applicant? Anyone would like to speak?
Sorry, I wasn't sure what you were saying. I'm Jack Remington, and I represent Mr. Dutra, who owns the property. Be glad to answer any additional questions. This project has been totally worn out by all the stuff that's gone on. Just for your information, I happen to also have been the person, or my firm, which is no longer in business, also did the Monteverdi 1 and 2, and did the original work for the vineyard that's on the site, so know that very well. We have walked it, we've been all over it. Nobody is going to see that property from Interstate 80 unless they stop their car and get their binoculars out and look at it. You will see, oh, there's something over there. But you will not identify that as a house when you're driving up Interstate 80. You will not. So I really have nothing to add to it. We've gone through this extensively, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
See, Jack, I have just a quick question. On the Monteverdi, are the roads there county-maintained?
Yes, they are. Yes. Uh-huh. You can see on this map here, you can see that the one that comes right close to the edge, that's where there's no connection to the Belcara project, but the one up above, there's a fire access up there for a part of this.
I guess the question that I will have is, the fire access and the gate, if they're public maintained roads on each side?
First off, there is no gate.
Huh?
The gate has been removed from the project.
On the front, on the entrance?
Yes.
But the fire access has, is going to have a gate?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it shouldn't, it's, it's not intended to be open to traffic, through traffic, but in an emergency or anything else, you can get through it.
I guess I'm just, question in my mind, since you have, county-maintained roads on both sides?
Mm-hmm.
Why not just have it open all the time?
It could. I believe that's probably up to the county, Public Works or so on, the road department as to how they want to look at it. But when we did Monteverdi 2, we had to have a connection so that when Belcara went, there was some way for an emergency vehicle to get through there.
Okay, thank you. Oh, let me see, one more question. One of the bigger lots, Lot 39, it looks on the map like it's got two building envelopes?
I don't believe so. Let me look at that. Melanie, do you have the, not two houses, ended on anything?
Guess what I'm seeing is, I'm seeing a public utility easement, that must be an existing easement. And then there's a, right adjacent to it is, it looks like a building envelope or a square. And then up in the far upper left-hand corner, there's another building envelope.
I can answer a question. What were building envelopes, the view shed, an area for a view shed for the vineyard? So it's not a residential, it wasn't intended as a residential building envelope, it was an envelope to be able to put an owner structure down there to be able to build a house.
So that's an existing structure, then?
No, it's not an existing structure. It's just what we allocated the space for, for many of those. Currently, there's a structure in the center of the vineyard that we relocated.
Yeah, would not be a building site for residents. It would be buildings of, a shed site or whatever for the operation of the vineyard.
Okay, there was, there was a comment somewhere where somebody mentioned a winery. Is that in the plans?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Many of the letters that we got are responsible to this project were stressing concern about ingress and egress off of Forest Hill Road.
Yes, uh-huh.
Do you want to talk about that at all? I mean, I mean, it sounds like it's in a draft.
Well, let me go to the map, let me go to the map and show you how, no, the area. Good? Oops. This is Forest Hill Road going up through, and this is the entrance right at this location. And you'll see, everybody talks about this curve here. The entrance comes out, and there's sufficient site distance in both directions. What happens is you get all of these very tight curves and so on, which are much more of a problem in weather or anything else than this is. We have added the additional lane on the right so people can, wanting to go in here, can slow down. Coming up this way, there will be a spot to fit in the middle and then turn and go in there. If people would drive 75 miles an hour on that road, none of these would be a problem, but they do, and it's all a problem, even though the guts have improved the road, it's a very good road. It's just during the mountain, Jeff, they have.
Jack, did I understand that in addition to a left-hand turn pocket, coming from Auburn into that development, that there would also be a lane for, if somebody was going to Forest Hill and making a left-hand turn towards the, to community of Forest Hill, that there's a pocket there for them to go into?
Well, there is a detail on that, but it's not a full separate lane. The traffic, not traffic in general, but the way I understand it is, they expect people to be pulling out here and stopping and looking for a clear road and then going. If people go faster than the speed limit, then theoretically you might have somebody come up behind you, but they can slow down at the same time if the person leaving can speed up.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Mr. Thompson, yes.
Additional slides that will show the lanes that we're talking about, and also Public Works is here to, they provide some additional information on Forest Hill roads, the turn lanes.
Did you say that there were slides there available right now to see that? Put that, put that up on the screen if you would, right now, please.
Thanks, Jack. Good morning, members of the commission. Stephanie Holloway with Public Works. So I prepared a few slides to kind of give you some history on, let me work through these here. Bear with me. To work through some of the history of our analysis, when we, when the project is proposed, we do an analysis of, of the project. And with this project, the main factors that we looked at are, you know, traffic safety of the roadway. Ingress and egress is in the forefront when we, when we review projects. So, you know, the first thing to, to talk about is the proposed access location onto Forest Hill Road. This slide shows you the available site distance if you're exiting the project, looking towards Forest Hill. And then a follow-up slide would be the other view. This is looking towards Auburn as you leave. And again, this is the existing encroachment that is proposed to be changed a little bit with the project. So the proposed project, when it originally came in, we analyzed the proposed encroachment as well as did an analysis and required a left turn lane into the project, be, be designed and be provided with the project. Let me skip forward, I want to show you that left turn lane. So this is the left turn lane. It has been designed for a operating speed of 55 miles per hour. That's the posted speed on the roadway. So you can see, coming in, this is eastbound from Auburn to Forest Hill. We have two lanes here. One, one is a passing lane in this section. So the project would build, would widen the road to provide for this left turn lane into the project. This is the proposed access here. This area here is, is basically a required facility that we need in order to provide for this facility here. There's what we call a shadow area on the other side that transitions back to the existing roadway down here.
But that's not a full lane, that shadow?
It's not, it's not intended to be a lane that would be used for traffic. It is 12 feet in width right here, but it's not intended to be used as a refuge area or an acceleration lane.
So what is its purpose?
Its purpose is, good question, when we provide for this lane in the middle of the roadway, we have to move essentially the, the other lane, the opposing traffic. We have to move them over to provide for that facility. Currently, this left turn lane is the westbound lane, so we have to move that traffic over. At this location, there needs to be a transition area on the other side to move them back, to move, essentially to move the lane over.
You're just widening the road at the turn?
Widening the road to provide the turn correctly. So let me go back. When the, when the project came in, we did analyze that, that the project does meet available site distances, I showed you, for the posted speed of 55 miles per hour. The required site distance is 605 feet for 55 miles per hour. We have since gone out and taken a speed survey of the roadway to determine that that was an appropriate assumption, that, that the traffic is currently still operating at 55 miles per hour. And we did analyze that and found out that our posted speed is, is posted correctly. There were a number of vehicles that we did notice that, you know, greater than that, greater than 70 miles per hour, but what we found was that it was really a small handful. The other analysis that we did in consideration of that was, you know, 55 is the design and the posted speed, but how much, we wanted to know how much site distance we had available. How many, you know, how much distance was it really, could you see? And we determined was, we meet, the encroachment does meet, sorry, a, a speed on the roadway, a stopping site distance of 75 miles per hour. So looking in both directions, you can actually see a vehicle and stop safely if they were traveling 75 miles per hour. So we did determine that. So we did determine that. The other thing we went forward on, we did take consideration at the, at the Forest Hill Forum a number of times that there was concern for the acceleration lane, the lane that, that you were questioning about. And we did just a quick analysis of how far a full lane, an acceleration lane, would impact the roadway. And we found that we would need, you know, roughly 940 feet of, of acceleration lane. That's a full width, 12-foot wide lane up the hill to provide for that. And then an additional six, sorry, I keep hitting the wrong button. Additional 600 feet here to taper back. As I explained, that taper on the other side, when we provide for that lane, this taper area essentially gets shifted down into this area. And you can see, this is the entrance to Monteverdi Estates. So this is a rough design, a rough distance of what that lane could potentially impact. Just to speak to that lane a little bit, we did go back and question whether, you know, that was an appropriate facility to be required with this project. And, and, you know, the engineers basically had determined that providing that lane in this location wasn't, wasn't going to be recommended. We felt that due to the curve, sorry, due to the, the vertical curve in this roadway, we really felt like it was safer. Because we meet sight distance and exceed sight distance in this location, we felt like the decision of the driver was more appropriate here as to whether it was clear to, to gain access than it was to, to put them in the center of the roadway, you know, force them to kind of look over their shoulder as they make that, that transition. So that was the basis of our, our current position, that the left-turn lane is not required with the project, or the acceleration lane is not required with the project.
Question on that.
Go ahead.
Is it, over here.
Yeah.
I'm not doing a Marlon Brando impression, by the way, I've had a cold. When you do turn left, there, there is going to be a, what do you call it, where if somebody's coming around the corner, you can kind of stop in there, just like a short area?
There is no, there's no area, there's.
No.
There is no area for that currently, yes. There is pavement for that. It's not legal, though, to turn in and stop there, in that, in that area. It, it will be striped. Gosh, I'll learn one of these times. There is, there is pavement there because of that, that what we call that shadow area. But it's not, it will not be a legal move to turn out and wait right there.
The only reason I bring that up, in Roseville, we have a mobile home park that if you turn left, it's a 55 mile zone, if you guys know where that is, before that little tunnel heading up north. And they have like a, I don't know, from here probably to the, over that door over there, an area. It's not a sep, it's a separate lane, but not a, not an acceleration lane. You can actually turn there.
It's probably like a short, a short refuge area essentially.
But not recommending one here?
Not recommending one here. And, you know, just to acknowledge, there are a number of locations that we do have those throughout the county. Typically, they're in a straighter section. Sometimes we put them in because, you know, you, I'm going to get the pointer right. You can't see as far as, as we'd like in either direction to be able to make that decision from this point. So if it's, you know, if it's clear to be able to make that decision to go into here, and then you can see that that is a better option than, than to not be able to see from the access. That's not the, that's not the case here. We, we really feel like we meet or exceed the available sight distance at the encroachment. So there shouldn't be a need for a refuge area there, correct?
Thank you.
So, so you'll have, they'll be looking to the left to see if anybody's coming to the left.
Correct.
Want to turn left, of course. Then they'll look to the right to see if anybody's coming from the right. And then what you're anticipating, if the road is clear, then they'll turn out and actually accelerate in the right-hand lane. It's a two-lane road in that place. That's what you're anticipating. So they're actually going to have, they'll be doing it when it's clear.
Correct, yes. Yeah, so they'll, they'll make a decision, they'll come to the access, they'll look right, they'll look left. And they'll make a decision whether it's clear, you know, if, and then pull out into the, into the passing lane, which is the number one lane, or into the, into the slower lane, which is the number two lane, when it's clear. So again, that, that decision, that decision happens here rather than in the middle of the roadway on a curve over their shoulder. And that's, that's really the, the difference in the, the two movements.
Okay.
Anybody else? Any other questions? Great, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, maybe I might mention other county folks that are in, in the audience. We have Andy Fisher from Parks. We have Jocelyn Stecker from the Agricultural Commission, in case you have any questions about the vineyard. We also have the folks from Cal Fire, as well as the Forest Hill Fire Protection Districts. If you have any questions regarding this shaded fuel break or defensible space, they're available. Thank you.
Comment, I'm going to ask you to keep your comments to approximately four minutes at the most. You'll come in and give your name, if you would, and sign in, please. And we'll, can I get a show of hands of who would like to, the only people commenting? All right. If you would, please. Kathy?
Nope, okay. Thank you, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. John Michelini, owner of the property at 4630 Rosarno Road in Monteverdi Estates 2, commonly known as Lot 54. Can we get the tentative map? Do I have it? I don't know how far back. First, let me say that as I've been getting ready to develop our property, I've been very pleased with the cooperation that I've been experiencing with the County of Placer and their willingness to work with us on our property. And I guess that's part of my concern as we look to develop Belcara. I also appreciate the effort that's gone into the negative declaration to preserve the sightlines from Interstate 80 so that people traveling through the area at 60, 70, 80 miles an hour for that momentary time won't have an impact to their sightline eight miles away. But as you can see, when the tentative map gets up, my property has lots 31 through 35 directly abutting it. Our property is on the western edge of Monteverdi Estates and the eastern edge of Belcara directs, directly backs to our property. I note that as far as the tentative map is set, or situated, we currently have in, I don't have the little. So our, our property is this, currently listed as Silver Nail, near this triangle. You know, a lot of effort with that sightline off I, I-80 is built into the negative declaration with a one-story restriction for building on lots 21 and 22 and 23. But no such exist, restriction exists for the homes abutting the Monteverdi Estates. If you look at the, the plot map here, this is, this is one of two that I have seen. This one currently has the septic area in the rear of the properties. And as long as that remains as such, we may not have quite the sightline disruption. But literally, it almost, I looked at this room and said, maybe it's a bit more graphic, but if, if you came to my home where it's situated on the property and we're sitting in the bathroom taking a, a bath, if these properties are allowed to go to two-story development, if you look at the building envelopes, it's pretty likely that those will be two-story developments. Any adjustments to those building envelopes, and you'll literally be looking from your, your restroom area there, your bathtub, right there, at those people looking down at you. Those properties are situated that close to Lot 54, and there's five of them. So the other tentative map I've seen for this property, and by the way, I didn't get a chance to comment on the negative declaration in 2011 because the map still shows a former owner who has not had possession of the property for five years. We didn't get any notification of that negative declaration, so we're kind of late, late in this game. The concern I have is that once the tentative map is done and we move on and people come to ask for adjustments to building envelopes, the county's been very good about accommodating those. And any transition of those MUSA areas to the front of the property or any changes to, to moving into the side will put those homes directly up on top of the hill and will have a significant sightline impact, not only to Forest Hill, but, and my property, but also the people in Monteverdi Estates 1. You look directly across at these homes from Monteverdi Estates Phase 1. So my, my, my thankfulness that the county is willing to work with people is my concern as well. That once they close this out and the development's done and we move down the road five or six years and people come to do the development of those lots 31 through 35, that they will find themselves looking for a better view by moving those building envelopes up to the top of the property, at the top of the hill. And then they will look directly down upon Lot 54 as a direct impact and then also across the Monteverdi Estates 1. Thank you.
Can I ask him a quick question? What is the grade, right, between yours property and that in the development?
So between Lot 54 and lots 31 through 35, there's, there's a hip. There's a ridge there. If they were one-story constructed and, and maybe even two-story at the front of the property as they're situated right now, there may not be a sightline disruption to our property. Again, the concern is that if they move those up the hill, because when the person who buys 31 says, "Wow, if I just put my house right up here, I'll have this great view of the Sierras to the southeast", that that property will be situated on top of the, the map instead of in front as it sits now. And that would create a significant disruption. And I think that work on that has been done very well here. But my concern is down the road, once this is approved and four or five years go by, that we lose that history and it's not, it's not captured as a requirement in the negative declaration like the lots 21, 22, and 23 are captured that are restricted to one-story development. Thank you.
Assuming this matter does go down the road four or five years and someone comes in to build a house, what's the process for them asking for a change in the location of the envelope?
Well, the process would be with a planned development showing a building envelope, and if they wanted to change that, like he's suggesting there, would have to go through a, a public hearing process, probably not before your commission, but before the zoning administrator. That would involve notification of folks within 300 feet of the subject property that would be proposing the modification of the building envelope. So if the gentleman still owned the property, he would get notified of the proposed change and would be able to come to the public hearing to provide testimony on that. Just for your information, it looks like the lots on, on, in question, 31 through 35, the closest one building envelope at this point is 60 feet from the property line.
All right, thank you. The next person who would like to comment, please step forward.
My name is Don Wolf and I'm a property owner in both the southern and northern divisions of Monteverdi Estates. I want to echo Mr. Michelini's points here. This property right here, this vineyard area is visible from our property on the southern division. It's really quite beautiful, this whole ridge line right here. And we really don't want to see a lot of homes built up two stories there ruining that view. The second part there, our whole western part of Monteverdi Estates is up on a ridgeline there. It's really quite beautiful, especially in the afternoons. If we get houses built all along that, they're all going to be looking down into our division. That's going to have an impact on our property values as well as tax property collectments from the county. Mr. Johnson, I want to address your point about the gate right up here. At the end of the street right up here, they're proposing, or there is a gate right there for Forest Department to go through there. County roads on both sides, I agree, and I can see why you wouldn't want that gate there. But that's going to have a direct negative impact on our community due to the traffic going through there. So I would ask that you not take that gate down. If that gate is going to be taken down, will we be able to have further comment on that? Or do you want to address those negative points now?
It's your time.
Oh, okay.
Few more minutes.
So, well, okay, the point is, will you folks be putting out a recommendation to take that gate down? That we need to address it now, or is it just going to remain up? That, that's the question. I don't want to take everybody's time if the gate's going to remain.
Has anybody proposed that that gate not be taken down?
I think we're going to, you know, personally, I'm going to listen to the public comment and then we'll make our decision after the public comment.
Okay, well, one of the meetings at the Forest Hill Forum said there will be over 350 more vehicles going in and out of the new Belcara. So you can see if that gate is taken down, those, a lot of that traffic's going to come through our community. The main road up into our development right here runs up the hill. So that's going to create a lot of extra pollution, noise, traffic in our neighborhood, which is going to, again, affect our property values and the safety of our community. And we really don't want to see that gate come down because of that. It, it actually offers a second access into Belcara. And, you know, we have a single access into our neighborhood, that should be good enough for them too, and not impact our, our community with extra traffic. So that's really all my comments on that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just ask something quick of, is there an issue with that gate as far as the county's concerned?
An issue with the gate?
With that gate.
As proposed, we are recommending approval with it there. Any other questions? All right, please.
Thank you, good morning. My name's Tim Woodall. I'm speaking to you this morning on behalf of Protect American River Canyons or Park, an organization that for many, many years has been interested in the preservation of the wonderful scenic, recreational, and other natural qualities of the North and Middle Forks of the American River. We submitted a letter on this proposal. As noted in that letter, our primary concern has to do with the potential visual impacts on recreational users to the canyon that this proposal contains. Many of the homes, as you can see just looking at this plot map, many of these homes are, are proposed to be located on the very edge of very steep canyons that drop down into the North Fork Canyon down to the American River itself. We think there's a real, very real possibility that many of these homes will be visible to recreational users to the canyons and that their experience will be impacted by that visibility. In this particular location, the North Fork Canyon is remarkably pristine and essentially free of visible development. It's a beautiful, dramatic canyon, part of the Auburn State Recreation Area, which is utilized by about a million recreational visitors a year. The 16-mile stretch of river that, that flows past this particular proposed development has been found eligible for designation as a federal wild and scenic river. This part of the North Fork Canyon, along with the Middle Fork, part of Auburn State Recreation Area, has also been found suitable for designation as a national recreation area. So it's a substantial public asset, and we think the scenic qualities that it possesses is one of those special features that makes it such a unique place and such a great asset, Placer County. And as we noted in our letter, our primary concern from a visibility standpoint is with lots 20, 21, 22, and 23, which you see up at the upper end of, of this map. And those, those proposed building envelopes are located in visually prominent locations, particularly Lot 21. If you can see, the building envelope is at the very, very northernmost edge of that lot, right on the edge of a canyon in a prominent location. It's hard to envision how that home would not be visible from various vantage points within the canyon to recreational users. I know the modified, mitigated negative declaration claims that these visual impacts will be reduced to a less insignificant level by very broadly worded and unspecified vegetative screening proposals that have yet to be developed. We don't believe that that proposed mitigation measure is sufficient to satisfy SEQA's requirements. It's simply too broad, too general. It leaves to the future the development of these, again, undefined vegetative screening measures to be employed. And, I mean, let's face it, the only reason for those lots to be created in that location with those building envelopes is to take advantage of the priceless views that those lots will afford. And, you know, screening or not, people want those homes because of the views they're going to afford. I'm afraid the screening is either going to be kept to a minimum or be inadequate from the get-go or be certainly, once the homes are built, cut down or modified to take advantage to a greater degree of those views. So again, we just don't think these mitigation measures are sufficient to satisfy SEQA. We, we also don't think that the proposal as designed, particularly as. We also don't think that the proposal as designed, particularly as it pertains to those four lots, is consistent with the Placer County's zoning ordinance, which talks to conservation of visual and aesthetic resources. It's also not consistent with the Forest Hill Divide Community Plan. Again, those lots are within the important view shed area. I'll just be a moment, thanks.
A moment more than we have now. 30 seconds, please, and...
Thank you, thank you. Again, within the important view shed and not consistent with the Placer County General Plan. And I would just remind you of Policy 1K1, which says the county shall require new development in scenic areas, avoid ridge lines and steep slopes, and maintains the character and visual quality of the area. The solution here, eliminate those four lots. You've got 90 acres of open space that's unbuildable. You eliminate those four lots, you still have 34, 35 buildable lots. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the gentlemen? No. Next, please.
My name is Mike Butler from Chicago Park, avid user of the North Fork River. Just a question for the gentleman that was just here. What is kind of the definition of the elevation of view shed? You know, if you're down on the river, using the river for recreational reasons at that point, is the view shed from a 2,000-foot elevation to the view of those lots on the ridge? Or is it from the river? You know, where do they define that visibility line? Is my question.
Maybe staff can answer that one? Or help?
The visibility line, we measure from the center of the North Fork of the American River up. We have a visibility exhibit that shows that you cannot see those, the lots that were most likely to be seen from the North Fork of the American River. Visibility study shows that you can't see it based on the slope. I can bring that up if you like.
Would you?
No, I...
No. Would you please bring him up? I'm asking.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Does it involve those four lots?
Yes.
It involves two lots, and the reasoning for that is there were two lots that were most likely to be seen from the North Fork of the American River, and that is what the visual analysis addressed. The other lots then fell within the important view shed, which is included in the Forest Hill Divide Community Plan, but they weren't the most likely to be seen from the American River. All four lots were within the important view shed, but only two could be seen from the American River, and it shows that it is not viewable.
Okay, even, I guess my question is, which, being on the American River there, it's pretty tough to view the ridges when you have tall forest, steep slope, trees that are over 100-foot tall, 200-foot tall, and then you have that vegetation fire break on that same slope, but the trees are still there, but the underground brush is gone or minimized for the fire fuel. That those trees still exist, and it would be very, very hard for me to see those lots amongst the existing forest vegetation that exists.
That's absolutely correct. You can't see it, based on topography, you cannot see those residences. And on top of that, we do have the vegetation that goes all the way up the canyon, and the 300-foot fuel break only borders...
Right.
Right, so after that, you see just full vegetation.
Yeah, so from the center line of the American River is the view shed definition there, looking up?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie.
Eric P. to Protect American River Canyons. I would just like to comment on the view shed. It's an inadequate line of sight. People aren't really recreating in that area so much in the middle of the river as they are on Codfish Creek Falls Trail, which is probably the most popular trail in the whole American River Canyon Auburn State Recreation Area system. It's been written up in Sunset Magazine, it's been featured in Waterfalls Book of California, and the trail is substantially higher than the river, and it crosses along the northern slope of the canyon, and it goes up to Codfish Creek Falls, which rises in elevation even more. And from Codfish Creek Falls, you can see the Monteverdi Estates, the, all of the firework that they've done there, the shaded fuel break. You can see the definition that that has created between the wild forest next to it. And this Bel Cara, these four lots that Mr. Woodall spoke about, are extremely visible from that location at Codfish Creek Falls, which is a very, probably one of the most popular destination waterfalls in all of state park because of its accessibility and ease of access for families. So, I would disagree with the previous gentleman that there is no view shed problem, and I would also disagree with the county that there is no view shed problem. If you, yeah, if you take it from the middle of the river, of course, but that's not where most of the recreation is taking place on this particular section of river. And we have an even greater vested interest in this because Park is partners with the Placer Land Trust in over 30 acres of land on this stretch of river in our land, doesn't extend up the northern slope of the canyon here. So, it is visible from Park Plusler Land Trust property. So, I would, I would hope that the commission would take a broader look at this view shed problem than just the center of the river. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Dwayne Frank, and I live in Forest Hill, and I've lived up there about 11 years. My primary concern is the safety of the traveling public and the people entering the, from the subdivision to Forest Hill Road. I'm struck by all of the exhibits that I have seen here today. They're all from looking at Forest Hill. This subdivision would be basically the beginning of what is the Forest Hill community, which is all off-site. There isn't any view of it. So, as you pass this, if this becomes a subdivision, where they would go to all community activities, to the post office, to the library, they're all going to be making a left turn going up the hill. Now, I've been around long enough that I can remember Forest Hill Road is a very small, narrow road. It used to go past Clementine, then they moved the road over to the Middle Fork, and now between the cooperation from a lot of different public entities, you have a pretty good road. And as a user of that road on a regular basis, I'd hate to see it diminished in its ability. I'm observing in presentations this morning that you're going to have some shadowing effect and so on. It suggests in my mind that the existing two lanes, as you're going eastbound towards Forest Hill, won't be there so that you have a different arrangement. Maybe it's going to be one lane again, like it was many years ago. The presentation by the engineer showed that there was a study that to have a full left turn lane going over would take you two segments, a 900-foot segment and another 600-foot segment in order to make it work. It would seem in my mind that that would be the appropriate recommendation, but it is not. For the future benefit of those folks who are going to be taking their children to school, going to the library, or going to the post office to get their mail, sometimes mail isn't delivered, you have to go up and get it, a good, safe left turn out of that facility should be done. Another little point is that that is the western edge of the water system for the Forest Hill PUD. Now, as many of you may or may not know, we've had a little difficulty over the last four or five years of getting a good-quality board, good-quality general manager, getting substantially back on our feet. We have that now. At the west end, it's all several hundred feet, maybe a couple thousand feet below the distribution point where the water's treated. So, there are some perhaps unique issues that have not been looked at by the most recent people in the comments. So, I'm concerned that maybe there is an area there that isn't adequately addressed. Thank you for the comments. Oh, I have one last thing. The roads in the subdivision proposed, will they be publicly maintained? And I'll take my own answer off. Thank you very much.
Mr. See, I have maybe a comment here.
You want me to answer it? Or...
No. Thank you, I'll wait. No, I thought I heard you say that going eastward by the entrance of the subdivision...
Eastbound towards Forest Hill.
That we'll be going down to one lane?
Well, today, there, as I come up from the bridge and as I go past, approach the Monteverdi Estates, that's, upgrade is two lanes.
Yeah, so my...
If I observed this morning, it appeared that that may not be the case after construction as proposed, as I understood it. I may be wrong.
Okay.
I'm not a traffic engineer, but it looked like there's going to be some narrowing and you have to make some adjustments for the turn lane in, and you have to move traffic around, then what happens to the existing ability for two full free-flowing lanes going eastbound? I don't know.
We'll get clarification of that.
Thank you.
I guess I was interpreting what I heard this morning as those two lanes would still be there, but we'll get clarification.
Thank you very much.
Uh-huh. Okay, let's just get that question dealt with. It will remain two lanes?
There will still be two lanes, yes.
Okay, so that, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Please.
Hi, good morning. My name is Hank White. I am the general manager of Forest Hill Public Utility District, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with the commission. I wanted to comment, I have reviewed the documents, and I see in the mitigated negative deck the description of what the district has issued, and I wanted to take an opportunity to communicate with the planner and with the developer that the district, to my knowledge, has not completed any evaluation of water availability. The letter that they submitted basically states, as you well know, the property is within the service area boundary of the Forest Hill Public Utility District, and as such is entitled to derive service from the utility district. However, we have not been provided with any demand information that we could use to evaluate the availability of supplies. I'm letting the developer know that and the planners know that, that there has been no analysis, so the letter that is stated that is being submitted isn't a will serve. I also noticed in the conditions that you require a will serve letter from the district. The letter that we submitted outlines that process. There's a development agreement that would be negotiated, we would talk with the developer, they'd have to bring what the, what the, what the demand is, and I'm sure they're aware of that, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to express that that's where we're at, and if there's any confusion on that, then we should clear that up before we move forward.
Okay, a question then. You say the negotiations with the developer have not begun yet?
They have not begun.
Thank you.
I think it, I think in your conditions, it's anticipated that they will start as soon as the tentative map is approved or not, or whatever your decision is. And I'm just making sure the developer understands, to my knowledge, there's been no evaluation of the project. It's a chicken or the egg thing in my mind. I don't know the exact process, when you get the will serve, before the tentative map, after. I'm just communicating that we have not evaluated the impact of the system as of yet.
But that's a condition, one of the conditions, that they will have to provide you the info for them, for you to give them a will serve letter, if that's appropriate.
Yes, so...
You're happy with the condition?
I'm happy with the condition, as long as it's understood...
But I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that condition's in there.
It is in there, yes.
Not to confuse it with your letter, the previous letter.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other further comment? Please step forward.
Hi, my name is Eric Staus. I actually am the guy that developed that, or put the vineyard in, in 1990. I bought that property back then, '89 or '90, I forget exactly when, and then I sold it to Mr. Dutren in 2008. So, I farmed it for almost eight years, and I've been on literally every square inch of it. And I just came here today because I'm curious to see what's going on with the property. I knew he was going to put some houses up there, but, or develop it, but I didn't really, really know for sure exactly. I've seen bits and pieces off and on what's going on there. But anyway, I've been down to that American River 100 times, walked there, been lost trying to get there, been, had gotten, collected lots of poison oak, and I've sweated a lot on the property, even lost a fair amount of blood on that property. And I love it there. I bought it because it was just spectacularly beautiful. I love the American River, I love the whole canyon and all that stuff. But I only got up now because there's been a lot of comments on the visual impact of what's proposed there. And I will tell you, having been there for eight years, walking down to the river millions of times, going to Codfish Falls, in my opinion, the visual impact is going to be negligible. I mean, almost, I think the staff is correct in what they're saying and that it's, and the maps that they've got, that there really is very little impact there. And I'd be more than happy to go out there with the gentleman with the suit on over there if he wants to go show me where you can see it, because what's proposed, given the trees and the topography from the Ameri, I have to guarantee that from the American River, you can't see one square inch of this property. You just can't. From, I've driven up highway 80 million times, and I've actually tried to find the property. I've slowed down as slow as I can safely go on the freeway, trying to see it across the canyon, and it's very, very hard to see. I'm not sure I've ever actually pinpointed exactly where it is, except now that that aerial photo was up there, I may be, maybe I can do it, do it now. But you had to slow down to an illegal slow speed, unsafe speed on the freeway to even have any prayer of seeing the property, excuse me, from the freeway. And the topography is such that there's just so many trees there that even from across the river, I mean, and it's, most of this development is hidden by the, where the hills are, it's just, I don't know, the whole visibility thing to me is a, I don't understand it because it just doesn't make any sense to be, for that to be the issue. Now, there may be other issues, but that's not one of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Michael Garabedian with Friends of the North Fork. We're here and we are ready to work on this subdivision. The work on it by no means is, is over. It did go through in 2006, a initial pre-development review. We've had SEQA review, it's not, it's not adequate, but we've spent a lot of time on that, and there's this, and the forum has met twice on it, and we've submitted comments, and we've had a lot of time to spend, spent today on a straw man, a view from I-80, which there is an issue to that, but it's not, it's not, it's funny, I've spent more time on that than the other serious problems with this. It's really, it's not, it's not, anyway. This, what we need to do now, that we've spent a lot of time on all these things, is to use the planned development law that the county has. The county planned development law deals with a large number of things, and four minutes is really not enough time to go into them. The critical issue we should be doing is talking about redesigning the subdivision in terms of its layout, removing lots, and eliminating problems. And one of the key areas, we have submitted a letter to you from a major publication about preventing fire hazards in subdivisions when you are designing and building them. Lot 21 is basically a fire trap for whoever lives there. It's dangerous to the people. It doesn't, there are ways to design lots and building envelopes that take into account the slope below them. You have the paper that shows one sketch of the metrics that go into how to locate lots. None of these lots have been done in a manner that addresses modern ways of designing subdivisions so they don't create a fire problem on the ridge. And planning development, planned development allows for that. The entrances as layout, after the staff report came out, we asked the planning department, they said, "There aren't any sketches of the layout in the, in the map." Well, today, for the first time, we're seeing them. Apparently, planning didn't know about these. This shouldn't be the case, or we come here and this is how we see for the first time, the first time a sketch of what the intersection is going to look like. The last thing we have is a map from 2011 and that is quite different than what's there. For this reason alone, the public should have time to look at that and understand exactly what it is. And I don't think you can approve this if you don't, if there isn't a guaranteed water supply for this subdivision. Now, Bel Cara is a real opportunity for this county. It's an opportunity for the county, for the developer, and the engineers and surveyors, for the community, for individuals and citizen groups to work, to work, make this subdivision compatible. The question is, is the county going to do public development, planned development with or against the land and community? That is the key thing. You have, the county has the planning, has the discretion to tackle a number of issues, and all departments that have been involved in this need to be, need to be, work back, need to work on this, this critical issue. The compatibility with the surrounding area has to do, starting right at the borders of this subdivision. On the south side, there are lots right up to the public land. Planned development contemplates a buffer there... Planned development contemplates a buffer there. There is a, there are buffer on other parts of the subdivision, but not on that. The density of this subdivision is totally incompatible with the land on all four sides, as was talked about, the people from Monteverdi. If, if the, if the, if the freeway view shows anything, it shows that this, that, that this Bel Cara is in high, high visibility. It's a high point from all parts of the canyon, from many trails. Many trails should be analyzed to look at this development, both the, not, and... Anyway, there, we want to go to work on this. We want to sit down. What you should do is refer, refer this back to the staff with direction, with questions, with an opportunity for the public to get involved and rework this subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, anyone else in the public who wish to comment?
Good morning. I'm Peter Stafford from Forest Hill. I've been a Forest Hill resident for about twenty-two years, and I want to echo Mr. Frink's statement about the issue of making a left-hand turn out of the proposed development to head eastbound on Forest Hill Road towards the town of Forest Hill. Early in the morning, that is a busy road in both directions, and I think it would be important to require a dedicated left-turn area in there rather than just a tapering shadow. I realize that would create some issues with lane alignment further east on the road, but we are considering here the lives of the people, especially children, you know, trying to get to school either by their parents or via a school bus from that development. It would be a horrible thing to see some type of tragedy because of a, uh, an incident where there was no safe place for them to, uh... Have a dedicated left-turn lane where they wouldn't be hit by opposing traffic in either direction. Thank you.
My name is Rich Bird. I'm living on Portofino Drive, which is in Monteverdi Estates Phase Two. I'd like to comment on the left-turn lane. I've been a resident there since March of last year. It's a challenge making a left turn on the Forest Hill Road in the morning, going towards Forest Hill. But it is completely doable. There is no, uh, dedicated, uh, left-turn lane once you turn left and head east. You just have to watch what you're doing. In fact, if you look at the, the approach to this intersection, this is actually a hill. You're coming down a hill. So if you don't watch, and they're flying, going down that hill, and you don't see them, you've got to stop and wait until this, 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 uh, view is cleared. If you don't do that, they're going to have time to slow down. And that's what I've observed after eighteen months of living here. The other thing I want to point out, really strongly object to opening up this gate, because what that does to this whole community is it makes it a thoroughfare. And that is not what I bargained to when I, when I moved there. I think the gate's great for safety. Leave the gate there and I'll find them.
Thank you. Next. Seeing no one else from the public, I'm going to ask any of the, um, county agencies or public agencies who have approached here and come today, if they have any comments that they'd like to make on the subdivision tentative map, um, CDF, or anyone else that Paul was mentioning earlier? Any representatives? Richard, you can step forward.
I have, I have a question for... All right. Okay, this may be for the Forest Hill Fire Protection District or the CDF. Basically, there's a pretty significant fuel break that is planned around this area. And the staff report basically was a little bit unclear to me, actually, whose responsibility is going to be to put that in and maintain it, or what the mechanics of that would be. And it appears that that's going to be the Forest Hill Fire Protection District's responsibility. And maybe you come and give, uh, a little bit of assessment of the fuel break and, and the feasibility of the fuel break. It looks like it's going to be on fairly steep ground and three hundred feet, and... And it appears that the, uh, building envelopes are actually up on the ridge top, and from a fire perspective, sometimes a ridge top is the best place for a fuel break. But maybe give, address just your view of the fuel break and how you assess it and where we're at with it.
Good morning. I'm Gary Kirk. I'm Deputy Fire Marshal for Forest Hill Fire Protection District. And, uh, the shade of fuel breaks will be put in by the developers, first of all, according to the layout that we've already established on the tentative map. And, uh, there again, it's subject to change depending on the situation. I haven't been on the ground, boots-on-the-ground kind of thing, to identify exactly how the homes are going to be affected by the shade of fuel break. But, um, the fuel break would be maintained through the CSA, just like we have now with the Monteverdi where we go through, and on an annual basis is maintained the, uh, fuel break that is being put in place by the developer.
So is that the Fire Protection District that does that work?
Yes. We will contract with a, uh, contractor, and also that has a registered forester, that will actually review, uh, each year what we do as far as any trees that need to be removed because of blith or whatever, bugs. Those will be taken care of by the forester to indicate, "Okay, you need to remove this tree, move that tree." We're doing this right now on the Monteverdi, and it's worked out very well. We've actually, uh, increased, uh, our obligation to the Monteverdi as well as, we have those funds to the CSA, and we've not only taken care of the shade of fuel break, but we've actually now taken care of the common areas within the subdivision as well on an annual basis. So we're actually creating, you know, I'm not sure of all the common areas on this one here. I haven't looked at it in great detail, what it's going to involve. But that could be monies that'll be used as well, uh, funds to maintain those common areas as well.
So maybe you can explain CSA, what that...
Community Service Agreement. And this is something that is, that the county will set up, and it actually can take care of the roads, uh, the pavement of the roads, the, um, the drainage, any lighting that might be involved, the shade of fuel break, items like that. That would be, the homeowners or the property owners would pay into that on an annual basis. And those funds will be used to maintain those items.
Okay, that explains it. And then I guess the other, well, it sounds like you're getting, you're going to need to go out on the ground and take a look at this, and if some of the building envelopes look like they're in a kind of a precarious area, would you be able to change that, or...
I believe so. I've, I've been on the ground enough to know, basically, the general layout of the property. And, uh, there's only a couple of areas that are really steep that might, uh, require us to go, uh... Not probably any greater than the three hundred-foot shade of fuel break that's identified. Typically, if you have a ten percent slope, you're a hundred, hundred-foot, uh, fuel break. Twenty percent slope, two hundred feet. Thirty percent slope, three hundred feet. So I don't think there's anything greater than thirty percent other than that north area up there that may require, um, any additional treatment. Depending, there again, as, as you know, we talk about drainages and everything else as far as what fire can do in these particular, uh, topographical areas. And we try to mitigate those as much as possible.
Okay, good. Appreciate it. Let me see. I, I kind of want to go back to, uh, the discussion of the, uh, emergency gate. And I understand where the residents are coming from, because it seems like in this county, it's real common for people to want to live in a, what'd you call it, a cul-de-sac?
Gated area.
Subdivision?
Yeah.
And of course, this won't be gated at the entry, just like Monteverdi's not, but... But, uh, to me, it seems like, um... Though the roads are being designed to a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, to me, it seems like, uh, there's a good deal of common sense in an area like this, these two subdivisions, where you have, uh, the ability to, for people to circulate through without having to contend with the gate. And here, I guess I'm looking at this particular subdivision. It's right at the head of a drainage. And, uh, so there could be an occasion where, for some reason, people need to get out fairly easily. And so, at any rate, I'm thinking that, uh, even though, understanding, you know, people's concerns that they don't want to build it thoroughfare and, uh, and a lot additional of traffic. But it seems like both these subdivisions are fairly similar, will be fairly similar in appearance and everything. And so it's, I can't see where it's going to have a lot of people. But I guess maybe I'm just making a statement here, but it seems to me in these particular areas, a little bit of circulation ability is probably a better thing. I don't know.
In my mind, it is. You know, there again, two ways in, two ways out.
Yeah.
You know, that's my, my, my concern. Uh, this doesn't have the two ways in or two ways out, dedicated, only the one way in. But the roads are wide enough to accommodate the traffic, for two, two-way traffic. Now, if the roads are smaller, obviously, you have to have the two-way in, two-way out. But in this particular case, with that, uh, gate up there, I, I understand from the Monteverdi people, they don't want traffic going through there. But in emergency situations, let me tell you, that gate's going to be open, and we're going to be moving traffic however we deem necessary to get them out of that subdivision in case of a fire.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else from the, uh...
But also back the other way.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Excuse me?
No, no, I, I agree with you. I agree. That's why we have the, the gates in the Monteverdi right now.
Okay. Gentlemen? The conversation goes through us back, not, not between you guys. You, you got in the hallway.
Good morning. Andy Fisher, Parks and Grounds Division. If it pleases your commission, I'd take a moment to briefly highlight the park and trail features that this project will provide. Uh, having not heard, uh, too much discussion about those, I'm going to try to quickly find the tentative map, which I think will illustrate the park and trail's the best. And if I'm, hopefully, I'm going in the right direction here. Uh, as, as I find that, briefly, the park, uh, there will be about a half-acre park that'll be constructed on-site. That park will be private and homeowner-maintained. Uh, and the construction of that park will offset a portion of the park fees. This project will pay park fees, uh, standard park fees at the rate of a planned development that will generate fees for the Forest Hill area that will be used for, uh, recreation improvements in the Forest Hill area. There's also some pretty important trail features to this project. I have faith that I'm going to reach this map quickly. The community plan of Forest Hill has a pretty robust plan of, uh, of a completed trail network to circulate from trails within the Auburn State Rec area up into the town of Forest Hill, and this project supports that. There'll be the dedication, the construction and dedication of a public trail that'll run through the property, that creates a couple of key links. Right now, the, the popular Forest Hill Divide Loop Trail is just to the south and west of this project, as well as the Connector Trail. Those are part of the Auburn State Rec area inventory. The property to the west of the Bel Cara subdivision is owned by the Bureau of Reclamation, managed by State Parks, and that is the Auburn State Rec area. For years, uh, I think the owners have not made issue of people who have used a portion of this trail to get on to what's been referred to as the Long Point Fuel Break Trail that, uh, gives trail access down to the American River. And although that's been on private property, the owners, to my knowledge, have not made, made issue of it. But this project will formalize that connection. So this trail now that links up to the Long Point Fuel Break Trail would now be public, at least within the subdivision. There's still a private parcel, uh, with a portion of that trail that's still going to remain private and not part of the subdivision. So there's a very small but important little link of trail easement right here in this corner that allows State Parks as the management entity, if they so desire, uh, to, to someday create that connection onto the fuel break through public property and make a through connection. Uh, as the trail goes through the property to the north and east, it will eventually meet up with other trails that will connect the town of Forest Hill with the Auburn State Rec area and that entire, you know, make that completed network envisioned by the community plan. So we're pleased with the cooperation of the developer in providing those trails and connections.
I see Andy, there's a question here on, um, trail. Is that a multi-use trail? Is it hiking, motorcycles?
Multi-use, non-motorized, and it will be natural surface. It won't be paved.
I see Andy, uh, I notice on the very, very southern end of the proposal here, there's a cul-de-sac with a private trail. Does that connect with something?
It, it, I, I believe it connects to the public trail, but it does remain private. That's, that's normal for a lot of subdivisions. Uh, the, the spurs that really just serve the neighborhood and don't connect to, to any meaningful network remain private and homeowner-maintained just to give them access out to the larger backbone, uh, trails.
There is a public trail, uh...
There is a public trail. The portion I outline here is all public. It will be constructed by the project and also included in that CSA zone of benefit that was just mentioned by the fire personnel. So as well as, as that zone of benefit, uh, paying for the maintenance of the shaded fuel break, roads, lighting, and drainage, it will also pay for maintenance of that public trail.
Okay, I'm talking about this small private trail. Does it currently connect with the public trail?
Uh, good question. It's something I probably should, should know, um, but I don't off the top of my head. I'm sorry. I presume it does, but I, I, I'm not sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, sir Andy? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Last call for any public agency or private, public comment?
In which case, see...
Yeah, I have one more thought that's come up. This gets back to the fire question. And we look at, uh, lots four and five are adjacent to, uh, public land. But, uh, for those particular parcels, there's, what's planned for fuel breaks there? Are there plans?
So we've got fuel break all the way around three sides, but not on that last little two pieces down there? Is that correct?
It doesn't look like there's any, uh, shaded fuel break in that area. What I think you'll be looking at is just the normal, uh, defensible space setbacks that are, uh, on each individual lot, um, for those properties, as well as all the other ones in the, in the subdivision. I don't know if there's anything that Forest Hill Fire would like to add to that.
So those two lots will have enough room to meet the current, uh, defensible space standards from the public land?
Well, they will. I, I can say that they'll have at least a thirty-foot setback from that property line. Now, as far as defensible space, I'll have to defer to Cal Fire or, or Forest Hill Fire.
All right.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Matthew Reichman. I'm the unit forester here locally with Cal Fire in the Nevada Yuba Placer Unit. I, uh, supervise all of our vegetation management programs, as well as our Law Enforcement Fire Prevention Bureau and our forty-two ninety-one program as well. Just so I, I recognize the question or understand it, it was regarding defensible space on those, those lots in the upper corner there? Is that the...
No, the, the lower lots, four and five.
And bear with me, I haven't been out on the ground and inspected these lots, recognizing that it's certainly, uh, Forest Hill Fire's discretion in permitting the project. Our defensible space under forty-two ninety-one is to the property boundary. And in order to go on to the federal lands, we would have to have, the landowners would need authorization from the Bureau of Reclamation, probably through State Parks in order to do that. So defensible space under forty-two ninety-one is to the property boundary, ideally within a hundred feet of a home, but it does end at the property boundary.
Okay. So these would be legal, then?
They would be legal as far as implementing defensible space on the parcels, yes. If they don't go out a hundred feet, it isn't at the property boundary.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Richard, is it there's perhaps less than a hundred feet from the envelope to the property line? line? Is that the question?
Well, I think so, but what I'm hearing is they would only be required to go to the property line.
They can't do anything about it anyway.
It would take some agreement with the State Parks and...
Correct. Correct.
Question for Jack.
Okay.
Thank you.
Answers for me. Thank you.
If I may add to this as well, yeah, four and five are down here. Typically, the 4291 would take an effect, 100-foot defensible spacing around that. Our fuel break is from here. So this can be done where we come through and do the fuel break through here as well. We've done this on the Monteverde where the actually homes are in the shaded fuel break area. So we will actually work around the homes to maintain those, but this can be brought over as well. But we can't go on to the neighboring property.
Right.
Only within this area here.
And whose permission do you need to do that?
I'm sorry?
I said, whose permission? Would it be the developer now at this point who would put it in saying that the fuel break goes through here, or would have to be later when the individual buys the lot and builds the house?
They're getting within the development parameters or the lines, development lines, the property itself. We can get the developer to do that, and then we would maintain those. And typically, in this particular project, a lot of this is the vineyard, and a lot of the area has already been maintained by the previous owner. So there really isn't much to do other than the fuel break around the perimeter of the project. So the project itself, there is some work to be done on that particular court area. I do recall that area. But not as that other 300-foot shaded fuel break around the western end. That is, there's quite a bit of fuel in there.
So, just maybe understand, I noticed that there are some parcels that do show fuel break in the parcel?
Yeah.
And so probably if it was desirable to put a fuel break along the south side, that that should be included now, so whoever buys that property knows that they're buying a property that's in a fuel break?
I agree with you. I agree with you. That should be...
So that may be a change that we should look at today?
Yeah, we would need to add that to. You're absolutely right. Yes, we did with the Monteverde as well. We went around the whole development, and some of those fuel breaks were, the homes were right in the middle of them. And we maintained all around them.
Okay.
So, yeah, you're absolutely right.
Okay, thank you.
But were those fuel breaks in Monteverde on the original maps for them?
Yes, yes, they were. Yes.
Mr. Chairman? The two lots down there, they're kind of, is that hilltop area right there? Is that where that is? I mean, that's the vineyard where it's relatively, it's a flatter spot right there compared to the other areas where we have the fuel bank that are extremely steep?
Yeah, actually, this area right here, there's a rise. It actually, I don't know if you can see, there's a hilltop right here, but this is a rise going up that hilltop.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the commission? On the public, in that case...
We're going to close the public part of the comment and bring it back for discussion here to the commission.
No one else?
Well, oh, boy. I'm thinking.
Do you want to put a condition in for fuel break four and five?
Yeah, I think that's one thing that we should do, just so everybody's upfront, and we've addressed the fuel break situation.
Okay. Staff can come up with some words?
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest modifying condition number 77, which talks about the submittal of a revised tentative subdivision map, and there's a few things that need to be shown on that revised subdivision map. So we would add item I to that, and it would state, "Shows the addition of a shaded fuel break across lots four and five to the satisfaction of the servicing fire district."
Seems acceptable. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the...
Mr. Denny.
On the question of having an impact on that, where it's Silverdale and the two lots, or maybe two or three lots that may impact being close to each other on the, I think, Paul, you said that if they wanted to move where the envelope is for the house, they would have to come in and apply for an application to move that, which would necessitate a hearing for that. But does the county take into consideration the potential of a visual impact to a neighboring property by the structure that's proposed?
When they came, come in to move the envelope, you know, there might be various reasons why they want to do that. If it gets closer to the neighboring properties, we look at that as, like I said, too, it also involves notification of those neighbors. So if there's an issue with it getting closer to the neighbors, the neighbor can come to the public hearing or provide a comment letter expressing their concerns.
So the onus is really on the neighboring property to bring the issue forward?
That's correct.
Well, also on those particular parcels, there was concern about two stories?
At this time, those lots do not require restriction to only one story. It's only the lots that are adjacent to the, or within the important view shed area. So those lots on the eastern side do not have that restriction.
Paul, on that, because that's a ridge, right? That's the ridge top, right where those are? I mean, it starts breaking down the other way?
I'll have to defer to Melanie.
And there, isn't there something in the mountains, I know up in the Tahoe area, that they can't do any, anything that's above the ridge line?
I don't believe this is on the ridge line. Those parcels are not on the ridge line to the American River. These are just on a secondary, Knoll, just like any other, you know, you would find in any mountain community. It's not on a primary ridge line. It's just on a regular secondary mountain side. So not, those requirements wouldn't apply to those lots.
Any other questions?
Okay, just thinking about it here.
Okay.
I don't know, what's feeling of the rest of the commission?
Well, it seems like the question of ingress and egress seems to...
No, no, as far as the two-story.
Oh. So we're talking about those three lots up there at the top, basically? Correct?
Those other ones are in there already, 21 to 23.
Was it adjacent to Silverley?
We're talking about the ones over here, whatever numbers those are.
I think it's 31, 32, and 33. I don't know, 34.
All right. I don't know. I think that's...
I guess my comment would be, is the adjacent Monteverde limited to a single story at that point?
I don't have the answer to that question. This subdivision was approved some time ago, so I don't have those conditions of approval in front of me right now.
But more likely they weren't, since it wasn't a view shed.
Probably not, because there was no development proposed next to it. So I would guess they probably don't have that limitation on them.
Okay, thank you.
I think the building envelopes get kind of small for a single-story house on some of those, and you're probably, to make it a usable lot, it's going to need to be, have the ability to be two stories.
Okay, well, I'm not seeing a lot of enthusiasm on that one, so. There's the other issue I brought up, and I understand the concerns of a couple of members of the community that would like to keep a gate in between the two subdivisions. And I can understand that from my, this is the way it is, and, you know, we don't necessarily want the neighboring subdivision to come through our subdivision to get out. But I guess my experience tells me that these cul-de-sac subdivisions really create kind of a problem, safety-wise, when you've got issues that close roads off and that type of thing, and people get a little bit panicked to get out of the subdivision. In this particular case, you have a public maintained road on one side of the gate, and a public maintained road on the other side of the gate. And it's not a major thoroughfare, never will be, because, you know, I've driven out and looked at the roads, and they're 25-mile speed limit roads. And so there will be a few people that decide to go this way rather than that way. But at any rate, in this particular area, particularly looking at the fire situations, I would say that they're recommended, the commission, that we go ahead and run the road through and take the gate out. That would be my feeling on this, just from a public safety standpoint.
Well, let me respond to that. I've been in a development where I fought against a through road, and we put in a Knox gate. And from an emergency standpoint, the Knox gate works great. It's not a problem, because I think that's the only thing you really need to be concerned about in this, is the ability to have access during an emergency, and they work fine. I don't, I would, I wouldn't support taking that gate out, because I think that really causes an issue for both.
I think two things are...
Jeffrey, your...
I think the project proposed shows the gate there, and I think we might have had a few more people here to talk to us, had that not been the case. I think it's certainly something that if homeowners want to take it up with Public Works or something at a later date, taking the gate out or not having it built as it's ready to go in could happen very easily. But right now, if we talk about opening that up, I think we'd have to open that up, too, and make more room for more people to come in and express their opinion on it that haven't had the opportunity, because it's not part of the original proposal.
Who has the key to that Knox block?
The fire department.
Emergency services.
Emergency services.
This would be the type of gate, I think, that if you're a resident and you have to get out before the fire department arrives, that...
You could probably just bump the gate.
It's got a bump gate, or that's what I'm presuming it would be. I don't know.
You know, just one comment, and I agree, it shows there, I don't think we need to actually plan for it, but one comment on a cul-de-sac, if you buy into a cul-de-sac, and there's an easement that goes through, where there's not a house at the end of the cul-de-sac, and it's an easement, and there was a gate, whether it's a dirt road, there's nothing there, but there's something there that it's an easement right, just for general information to anybody, if you buy into a cul-de-sac like that, eventually, that's going to go somewhere, whether it's a gate, you know, for fire emergency access, or it's a road extenuation for, you know, the next parcel or whatever. So I'm just throwing that out, so you know, if you're buying, you know...
It's probably going to go through sometime.
Yeah.
Yeah. And my experience, I mean, my experience is just the opposite, where when I moved in, the city had installed a barrier at the end of my street, and it became an issue from a public safety standpoint, and the barrier went down, and all the negative stuff that was predicted really didn't happen. It didn't become a thoroughfare, and it didn't become a racetrack. It's just a community that's open and available for people to drive through, so...
Well, I think the important point on what you just said is it can be changed at some point down the road. The access is there, the gate can come down. I agree with Jeff. I think this is, we shouldn't be bringing this up now.
Okay, well, I'm okay with that.
Get your point on record, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to note, Cal Fire just informed me that the gate has to be kept unlocked. The code requires it, so...
Okay, good. That's good information. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion, gentlemen? What else have we to do?
Well, we've had a lot of discussion and concern about the access and egress, mainly the way out. So what's, you know, I'd say, commission, what's our consideration there?
Well, it seems like there's two decisions, basically, or one decision to make, whether we accept a no left turn lane separate or the way it's set up now. Any feelings one way or the other? I mean...
I think under present conditions, you know, it's probably a calculable thing to say it's not needed. We know it's not going to get any better, though. I mean, traffic's not going to go down.
Yes.
And getting something dealt with after the fact is...
Is going to be much harder than doing it now. But, you know, I have no crystal ball to know whether we're looking at a 50-year event or a five-year event, as far as when that might come up, and...
Well, it seems, too, that part of the question was, you know, just a matter of driving technique, insofar as you merge by looking right and left and going, or you merge out into a separate lane and then look back to merge again, so it's...
And I don't know that a left-hand turn lane is going to make it idiot-proof. There's drivers out there that tend to botch things up, no matter what you do to make it easy for them.
The only thing about having that lane going towards Forest Hill, that it is a, it is a safety area in case, because it is on a curve there as traffic is coming up from Auburn, and that if somebody is coming rapidly at that area and they just don't happen to see, at least it gives them an area, as they're starting to pull out and they see that car, there's an area for them to pull into in case there's opposing traffic coming. It's, to me, it's more, I'm thinking more of a safety pocket than I'm thinking of a whole, you know, extended period of an acceleration.
Refuge, refuge lane or refuge...
Right.
They have those little spots on Douglas Boulevard where you can pull out and stop between lanes of traffic and poke out...
Well, we've got to remember, too, if there's two lanes going uphill there, the one that they would be turning into is the fast lane.
Right.
And so that person's going to be going faster than probably somebody in the other lane.
Coming up the hill.
They're coming up the hill.
Well, is that really, is that a passing lane, or is that a lane of travel right there going up the hill?
It's a passing lane.
And how long does that passing lane extend forward and backwards from that turnout?
How far does that passing lane continue on either side of that turnout?
Is that a five-mile passing lane or 500-yard passing lane? I haven't, I'll admit, very...
I believe that the passing lane extends over the hill, and it terminates close to the Monteverde Estates access.
And that would be approximately a mile?
Approximately 1,000 feet. Yeah, approximately a quarter mile. Yeah.
You know, one question, you've got the shaded area there, so really, for this discussion, it's with the pavement. So say in the future, you could actually restripe that and gain a extra lane there if you had to?
We haven't analyzed, we haven't actually, you know, done the analysis of the acceleration lane, if that's what you're asking?
Well, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I know that, but I'm just saying, for the improvements they're doing now, if it was restriped, because you have a shaded area that's sort of like, it's a paved area...
Right.
It's not used for anything. But in the future, if it didn't work out like it's proposed right now, say if you've got more traffic on the road, 20 years down the, you know, down the road, it showed that you needed a wider area, you could restripe it?
We could restripe it. For what would be the question, and how much? I mean, I think it'd be safe to say, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't have enough pavement today to be able to restripe the roadway for the whole acceleration lane, the lane that I showed you, the 940 feet.
Right, but you'd have a...
We would not have that. We would not have widened for that. The road would have to be widened and the hill cut down. Pretty expensive project. Anything less than that, it's hard to say how much without actually looking at a plan for that.
How long, how long is a refuge lane there, or position?
How long is a refuge lane?
Yeah.
There's not really a standard for a refuge lane. I mean, there's no refuge lane. There's the full acceleration lane, and then there's really anything in between. It comes down to engineering judgment, how much pavement we have, speeds. There's not really a standard that I can give you for how much a refuge lane is.
Well, I'm in favor of refuge in there. I've used them, and sometimes you do get out in 55-mile zones, and you all said, oops. Even if you're a good driver, there's people going 75 miles, as mentioned earlier. It's good to have a spot to stop, so you don't get hit from the people coming down the hill.
Yeah, there's two refuge lanes, if you want to call them, or safety pockets, on 49 at Loxley, and then the other one that's right next, I can't remember the name of the, where the refuge facility is. And those are really good, because it really gives you an area to, because there's so much traffic there to get into. And I would very much propose at least that, that sort of safety area for people to pull out in.
And if I can just add, just to reiterate what I had said before, you know, the reason that we haven't recommended a refuge lane is we really feel like those instances that you're quoting are on a straight road, where, you know, you use your mirrors, there's not a curve involved there. And we really feel like, in this instance, because of the curve, that we're not recommending that at this time.
But I still think it's important to have it there, even if they don't end up using it, at least it gives them, in case some opposing traffic comes more rapidly than they think, it gives them an area to jump into if they need it.
Jeffrey, how are you filing on this?
You know, part of me says that having the little refuge lanes is a nice feature when you're trying to...
Poke out in some of these instances. On the other hand, we consistently rely on staff's recommendations and the tables for visibility and that that they use. I don't know why we'd throw it out the window today.
Well, I mean, everything that we get from all staff is nothing but a recommendation. We make the decision.
No, I understand that, but there's engineering principles and tables for visibility based on speed and all that, and we continually rely on them. I don't have anything to tell me that she's wrong today.
You know...
Put it, just, I mean...
Let me add a little bit of, you know, experience with this road to the discussion. I think a lot of the residents of Forest Hill are probably more concerned about the traffic coming downhill there. And the reason is, in... The traffic coming downhill there and the reason is, in Monteverni Estates, there's a, a two-lane section. And it comes up on a little hill, the little ridge that we're talking about here and then, uh, it. Becomes one lane just before you get to the Belkara intersection. Oftentimes what happens, and that's when we're talking about the seventy-five mile an hour. Driver, people will, uh, it's a short double section and people will race each other, see who's going to be first. Getting over the hill when it next down to one lane. And so I think that's a concern, uh, probably most residents really looking at is when people are turning left to go to Forest Hill. Is these people that are racing over the hill that they have to watch out for. But I guess what I'm hearing today is that, uh. Granted, this might be a difficult intersection for people coming out of Belkara. But, uh, they're going to have to carefully look both ways. Before they turn left and probably wait until they, uh, don't see anybody coming and then it'll be safe and so, I think that'll be the challenge for the drivers here. And probably fifty-five miles an hour, what she, she said, most people are driving fifty-five, it's not a problem, it's a occasional one that's going seventy-five, which there are.
Like there's an enforcement issue more than a design issue.
Yeah, well, it's, and, and, you know, I think we just have to accept the fact it is going to be a, a little bit more dangerous intersection than. A lot of the others that you'd see, but we see a lot of these on all these roads.
Well, I think it's better that it's dealt with now if we believe that it has a potential issue than the county's expense later to try to fix a problem. That, uh, becomes more apparent with time.
I guess it really boils down to, uh, engineering's, uh, evaluation of the feasibility of what we're talking about. And, uh, you know, I don't have the expertise to say that this protection lane is safe, so, if, you know, maybe, maybe we could ask engineering to give us a. An assessment.
Of the options, the, as it stands and then with the, the lane.
Yeah.
Good morning Commissioners, Ken Graham with the Department of Public Works and we've had a lot of discussion, both community-wise as far as, as far as the department regarding, you know, how to treat this entrance. From our standpoint, from all the review we do and every place that we look at elsewhere, we're always trying to minimize the number of decisions that a person has to make, uh, and try to provide the safest opportunity that we can. We do believe at this location, we are not recommending that we do any refuge lane or even an acceleration lane. We are okay with an acceleration lane, if you do it, we believe do it right, uh, we can support that, we don't believe it's necessary through all the analysis, this is not all that different. We have looked at speeds, we have taken speeds, the average speed is just over fifty-five miles per hour and there's a handful of cars, ten or so a day, that are going beyond seventy. There's adequate sight distance here for over seventy-five miles per hour. We would much rather have someone go, take us, pull up to the intersection, look both ways, make sure they have the gap and then go, rather than. Figure they have a refuge lane, look left, get into that refuge lane, then look over their shoulder while they're accelerating, while they're trying to turn the steering wheel to make sure they're getting out of the curve. I don't thi, I, I couldn't recommend that, I, I, I think it is a poor idea, uh, if you guys choose to want to approve that, we'll, we'll talk about how we can protect the county in case of something happening there. But it is definitely not what the department recommends doing. Don't do it, do it fully, but doing partially, we, we just can't recommend, we don't believe it to be a good idea.
Thank you. Questions? Further discussion on any other points?
Okay, uh. We had comments on. I don't know if we discussed this, uh, lot twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three, visibility.
From the trail and.
From the canyon and.
I don't know, my, my deal is, is I, I know. Comments were made, you can't see it from the river, but you can see it from hiking trails up the side, if we get into that, it would be no matter, you could say the trail that they're proposing through there could. Cause them not to do the development because you can see it from the trail, I think. You. Use common sense as that if you're doing the development and it sounds like the condition's already in there where it's, it's the materials. It's, it's the heights, you know, it's, it's all those things that you can do reasonably. Without saying, telling somebody, well, you own the property, but we're going to tell you that. You know, you've gone through years of processing and, and just knock those two out, there's no cost to, to you doing that, you know, so I. I, I think that. There's been enough studies done on that and when I hear people talk about it, it's, well, we might see this or we might see that, that's true, you might, you might not. And if you're looking real hard, you can see anything.
Now, one question that was brought up, uh, in the same regard by, remember, Patrick, was the idea of.
Vegetative screening, but that was a fairly nebulous description of what might happen, any comment on that?
Well, I think there's, it's, it's a forested area and there's forest on the ridge, you know, they're going to have to probably remove a few trees to build a house. But, uh.
So you're thinking.
I can't see what kind of, you've got a fuel break, so you're going to be opening up underneath and leave a canopy, so.
Yeah, so from a distance you see the canopy.
All right, any other further discussion, questions, opinions? In that case, I'll call for a motion from anyone. Mr. Moss.
I will make a motion with the planning commissioner about the.
Mitigated negative declaration, um, as modified, the mitigated monitoring program has set forth an attachment D. And approved the thirty-nine lot tentative subdivision map and conditional use permit with the planned residential development. Um, has shown on attachment C, subject to the, uh, sequo findings and attached conditions of approval with number seventy-seven as modified to extend the shaded fuel break.
I'll second.
I've got a motion and a second, uh, comment from Mr. Thompson.
Uh, we want to make sure that, uh, you include the, not only the sequo findings, but the, uh, tentative subdivision map, the conditional use permit, uh.
Yeah, I think I had that, the tentative subdivision map and conditional use permit for the planned residential development.
And the findings for SB twelve forty-one.
And that too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So amended.
My second.
All right, gentlemen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries and with that motion, a recess.
And, and, uh, Mr. Chairman, you might want to add the, uh, appeal process.
Yes, yes. If you wish to appeal this decision, you may file and pay five hundred and thirty-six dollars within the next ten calendar days, I believe it is, that's correct, and we'll rehear you. Thank you for just.
Mr. Chairman, if you could please clarify on the appeal, that appeal would not go to this, uh, commission, but it would be an appeal to the Board of Supervisors.
Absolutely. To the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, returning to our agenda item workshop. George, if you would be so kind as to address this.
Um, yes, thank you. It's nice to be before you again, gentlemen. Uh, my name is George Rososko. I am a supervising planner with Platte County Planning Department, or excuse me, Planning Services Division. Um, as you will recall, we, um, had one workshop on the winery ordinance. Um, that was very cursory. Um, it was, it was put on hold while we went through the workshop process for community centers, which we have, uh, completed the workshop process. I'm now in the process of presenting that to the municipal area councils. It's going very well. I've made about one go around to the, to the municipal area councils. Um, most of the MACs need two because it's a large amount of information to take in in one bite. So I go one time, I present it, I get their questions, that sort of thing, and then I go back a second time. And so far, I've been back to two of them twice and gotten recommendations. It's going very well. But now we're ready to start on the winery ordinance. Um, by way of background, the ordinance that we have in effect now was started in 2006. It went through a lot of, um, public hearings. It went through a lot of vetting. It took about two years. It was ultimately adopted in 2008. Um, since that time, the Vintners Association has formed a task force to monitor and review that ordinance, and they have asked the county to amend the ordinance in three ways. Allow tasting rooms to conform to the current state law, which allows, essentially what they're asking is to allow their tasting rooms to sell bottles, uh, wine by the bottle and by the glass for onsite consumption. Our ordinance does not allow that right now. State law does. Um, they would like the promotional event definition that's in our current ordinance redefined. Um, and they would, uh, like, um, wineries to have unlimited small events and up to 12 large events as a, um, matter of right. What I've attached to the staff report today is an ordinance, and, and I'm not going to call it a draft ordinance, although it looks like a draft ordinance. It's an ordinance that would implement the request by the Vintners Association Task Force, and that's, um, a jumping off point for us to start to have discussions about what we do and don't think is, is appropriate. When I say "we," it's not really me, it's you. What you do or don't think is appropriate. Um, I would like to remind you, um, that as we go through this process, and it was the same thing that we had with, um, the community center issue, is that the ordinance has tried to balance, um, the needs of Vintners with surrounding property owners. We have parcel fragmentation that we've talked about in, in our farm zones. We have, for instance, this would be a typical area where you might find, um, wineries. And for instance, you have a 28 acre piece here. Um, you have some five acre pieces here. You have a 15 acre piece here. You have a two acre piece here. You have a one acre piece here. You have a very small acre piece here, maybe 10,000 square feet, 4.6. So you have all this mishmash in our farm zones where, uh, these things, um, will be located. So this ordinance has tried to balance the needs of everyone involved. Um, what I'd like to do is quickly go over the ordinance with you. And I have some PowerPoints if you'd like to see more things in depth, but I'm just going to take a quick run through it. And if you have any questions, I would tell you to stop me and ask. It is a workshop. It's not a public hearing, so, um, it's meant to be less, less formal. So with that, we did go through, and, um, starting on page 15 is, is the ordinance. And it says "draft," but again, let me please reiterate, it's not a draft ordinance. It, it, it's an ordinance which would, uh, initiate what the Vintners, uh, Association's Task Force has asked, um, the county to put forth. The first thing is promotional event. We've redefined it into several new definitions. One is "event," which means, um, an event is simply any social gathering on a winery that is more than one hour, other than drop buys for regular tasting operations. And then you go on and you define, uh, I have, uh, staff has defined small event and large event. And these can be confusing, and they may need to be cleaned up. But a small event is an event that is attended by 50 or less people at one time at a winery located on 4.6 acres gross with an outdoor component, or an event that is attended by 100 or less people at one time on a winery located on more than 4.6 acre gross with an indoor or outdoor component. Then a large event is just a scaling up of that. And then the really new, uh, uh, definition is a tasting room gathering. Essentially what that says is, is a, a winery would be allowed an unlimited amount of tasting room gatherings, which essentially is 50 people or fewer inside of the, uh, tasting room. And, um, it could include, uh, winemakers dinners, those sorts of things. Yes?
Those differ from the same definitions from the community center events?
They, they do differ, uh, a little bit. The, they're intended, the small and large event is, is intended to give a little bit of a sliding scale. Um, they cut off at, um, 200 people, where the agricultural event centers can go up to, um, I believe it's, it's 400 people on 40 acres or larger. Um, so it's a meant, meant to have a little bit of a sliding scale with regard, and define between what a small event would be and what a large event would be. And there's small events on smaller pieces of ground, and large events on larger pieces, and small events on larger pieces.
Okay, but they're very close in, in numbers?
They are. Uh, the most you could do, a large event on a larger piece of property, which is over 4.6, would be, um, 200 people.
George, mine was on, um, the tasting room gathering, so it's unlimited. And if somebody had the 4. whatever acres and they, they had the eight, 10,000 square foot barn and stuff, then they could do that every night, so they could have 50 people there. They could have 30, 40 cars every...
There are some limitations. As we get into the development standard, there are some limitations, just like there are on, are on community centers, about operation times and noise standards. But by and large, what it would allow is that if you have a tasting room, um, you can't exceed the occupancy load of that tasting room. You can go up to 50, but if your tasting room only allows 30, you'd only be able to have 30 people there. But it does allow you, within the prescribed time limits, whatever those may be, for the operation of a winery, to have unlimited things going on in your tasting room. That's what's proposed by this.
Okay, George, um, now it says that on a large event, you can go up to 200 people on a, uh, 4.6 acre parcel.
On a parcel larger than 4.6 acres.
Okay, so in the event center definition...
It doesn't start until...
You'd have to have 20 acres in order to have 200 people.
20, yes. I'm sorry, you're correct.
Right. And so there's, that's one difference that we have in this.
And, and you will see, there are differences between the, um, event center ordinance, which is going to the MACs right now, the proposed event center ordinance. And there are, um, great differences between what, um, would be allowed as an agricultural event center and what would be allowed in, uh, the winery ordinance.
Is there any way to get those side by sides, so we could see them sometimes?
Absolutely. I, I can, I can, yeah. This is only the second workshop I would anticipate that we'll have one more, maybe two, but, but, um, probably two realistically. And we can show you the side by side differences. They, they, um, there, there is large differences between the two.
George?
Yes.
The, the amount of people and the acreage, that's an allowable maximum. Site conditions and stuff still might have you putting a smaller number on a particular applicant?
It, it, it could. I, I mean, you need to have parking if you're going to do these things. You need to have adequate parking. You need to have adequate infrastructure. You need to have all those things to do that. This is what would be a maximum amount. It, it is site specific, but the one thing that, the one component in here, um, is we don't require, as you remember, in agricultural event centers, we required use permits for all of those. There is not, um, a same discretionary permit requirement, um, contained in this ordinance for those sorts of things. So it would be things that we would have to do as we move along. We could do something like that, but that would be at your discretion. Is there any more questions about that before I?
Just, uh, so, what we're talking about here, and this is by right, and not, uh, so, as far as conditions go, then there wouldn't be any way to, uh...
There would not be. With the tasting room gatherings, that would be by right. And then you get into, um, the small events and large events. Most of those are allowed with zoning clearance, which means you do have to meet the zoning, uh, parking requirements, that sort of thing. But there's not, there's not a use permit. There's not an administrative review permit. There's not a standard set of conditions that would be applied, but there are standards that you have to meet. There are a few, there are, I thought someone put a time limit on me. There are, there are, um, there are a few, um, zone districts, and a very few for small and large events, that require, um, a use permit. One is air, airport, uh, you know. And then one is commercial plan development. The rest are zoning clearance. And those are also things that we can have a, a discussion about, a robust discussion, about whether that is how you would like that to be or not. Yeah, with zoning clearance, right.
So, so somebody with, uh, 4.7 acres could have 200 people. Am I right?
Um, yes. It would be, it would, it would be, it would depend on their zone district. Let's say they're in, um, um, a farm zone district. In residential ag? Hmm, hold on one second. In residential ag, they would either have an ARP or an MUP, so there would be an opportunity to condition those. So in, in the residential agricultural zones, there would definitely be a, a subsequent permit that's proposed now. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you? Um, the, um, hold on one second. The, um, farm zone in most cases would not. The ag exclusive forestry would not. Those would be the, the ones. So I, I think the majority of the, the wineries that you're going to see are either going to be proposed in residential ag or in farm. Maybe some in forestry if you get out near Forest Hill or something, but residential ag and farm. Yeah.
Question. George, the, the categorizing of the wineries I'm seeing on, on the zone district thing here is related to their production of, of cases of wine?
Yes.
Um, do we differentiate between a bottling plant and a, a winery someplace? I mean, that actually is related more to, to growing grapes and producing from start to finish? Or are they all kind of lumped as the same?
You mean like, if, if you came in and said, "I'm, the only thing I do is bottle..."
Correct.
Yeah, that would be a different use.
That's a, okay.
Yeah, it would be more of a commercial use. It would be, um, a processing, like food processing, or maybe, uh, industrial park, industrial zone, heavy commercial. Because what you'd have is you'd have product coming to you, and you'd have this plant that simply bottles product.
So I can have an acre of grapes and import the rest and meet the criteria?
At, at this point, you, you, I don't think most of these wineries have bottling facilities onsite in, the way you, you know, would think. I know there's mobile bottlers. I know there's things of that nature. I know they may bottle it on small. But are you concerned that you put in an acre of grapes and you have a bottling plant?
Well, I, I mean, I guess...
I guess it's, I guess it, it, I guess it's conceivable. I hadn't really thought about it.
Something that I guess is right for the potential of abuse.
Uh-huh.
Um, with the wrong person getting a bright idea and running with it. And, 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 and at that point, we don't really have an agricultural-related operation that's meeting the intent where, where, yeah, where, where really just having a, a commercial use in an agricultural zone.
You, you know, we do, in a winery, it means a bonded winery facility, the proposed definition, comprised of buildings used to convert fruit juices, all or part of which are produced on the property to wine, to age, bottle, store, distribute, and sell said wine. A winery for the purpose of this section includes crushing, fermenting, re-fermenting, bottling, blending, bulk, and bottle storage, aging, shipping, receiving, that sort of thing. It's something we can definitely make sure it is tightened up, so someone doesn't become a bottling facility. I can go back and look and make sure that we have that, that covered.
I think, I think the person would have to be producing wine in order to have a bottling capability, right?
Uh, yeah, but you can bring product on as long as they're from District 10. And I believe you can even bring, uh, and I may get corrected on this, but my understanding is you can even bring in finished product or juice and, and use that, um, with your production.
Yeah, you can bring...
Yeah, and then also from a bottling standpoint, a lot of them are growers, but they don't bottle on site.
Right.
And so I think that's where you could, that's...
And I guess I'm not worried about whether they're bottling it or not. Um, I, I come to mind, we had one gentleman that's spoken several times who does not grow anything on his facility. He just bottles, and he's getting, or he's afraid he's getting lumped in with the, the agricultural users who are actually producing something and turning it into something else, and, um...
Well, I think...
He's actually afraid that he won't get allowed to be a part of the Vintners ordinance because he's not really doing it. He's just bottling.
Well, and I think to, to your original question about, you know, somebody abusing the system, I, I think that's where it'd come in, if they were bottling offsite, because they could have their acre of grapes and say they're bottling 20,000 cases a year, you know, to sell or whatever, where they're just buying from outside the area and, and then meet the standards to have the 200 people on 4.7 acres.
And, and I would mention, and, and this is a good segue into that, the, the ag commissioner has actually provided correspondence, but he believes that the requirement for actual onsite vineyard should be moved upward as part of this ordinance from one acre to either, um, uh, five acres or a minimum of half the site, whichever is less. So in other words, if you had a 4.6 acre parcel, you'd be required to have 2.3 acres of that in vineyard. And then till you got to 10 acres, um, at five acres. So the actual Platte County Ag Commissioner is recommending that the, that the production of onsite vineyard go upward, which I think speaks to a lot of the concerns that you have. You start moving that upward, and you start, um, you know, having more production onsite and that sort of thing. You have less things coming off. But that's definitely a good thing to look at, the bottling issue. I'm sure he does. That's the only one that I know of for sure that I'm comfortable to, to discuss. But as we go along, I'm sure he'll have more. So, continue onward. Yes. So, um, we've covered the new definitions. Um, there are still a lot of the, um, old verbiage from the, um, original, um, ordinance, temporary outdoor events, wine cases, wineries. Um, the charts remain substantially the same, with the exception, um, that, uh, staff has added small event and large event into the, um, use charts. Um, we...
George didn't on the, uh, temporary outdoor events.
Uh-huh.
And I thought I saw this package somewhere, included in that was weddings.
You mean, can you have a temporary outdoor event and have it be a wedding?
Well, I saw a definition somewhere in the package here that talked about temporary outdoor events, and it mentioned the word weddings.
Hmm. I'm not, I'm not sure about that, but one of the things that I was going to bring up when I got through the ordinance was, we received some correspondence, and one of the suggestions in some of the correspondence that we received is one of the ways to provide, um, events for wineries would be to, um, create a more permissive temporary outdoor event permit process. Instead of only having two, have, um, a number, whatever would be determined appropriate, six, eight, 10, and have that process streamlined so, um, that each time they wanted to have an event, they could come in and get a temporary outdoor event. Maybe that's what you're referring to?
Oh, it's, it's on page, uh, I don't have my glasses here. It looks like page five. It mentions, "A temporary outdoor event is a large or small event, limited duration. That may include meetings, fundraisers, or weddings, and that are incidental to the main person, uh, purpose of producing wine."
Oh, that was, that, that was, um, simply a reference to what you can or can't do as a temporary outdoor event. A temporary outdoor event, eh, essentially, um, allows any kind of event, anyone can apply for one, and we look at it.
So these wouldn't be by right?
No. You still have to go through a temporary outdoor event permit process.
Okay.
Right.
That's where I was missing.
Right.
Yeah, and so for...
It's included, it's included by reference because, um, the wineries, uh, when this first went through, it's included by reference, because that was one of the methods they used to have, um, events that weren't promotional in nature. If you'll remember, the old winery ordinance, um, states that if you have onsite events at a winery, it has to be in direct promotion of onsite product. And so if you were going to have a wedding, there was a question about whether that was really a promotion of your product or not. So that would be one way that you could have a wedding onsite. So it was, it was included. So that would be one way that you could have a wedding onsite. So it was, it was included. The way this ordinance is now set up is, is the same way that, uh, the draft ordinance for community centers is. Is that you don't make the event promote the onsite product specifically. You don't have to have a tie. What you do is you make sure that the winery and the vineyard are an actual agricultural bona fide production, producing winery and that that's how you make sure that the production is happening with regard to agriculture.
But the event doesn't have to tie to it.
No.
And they would still come under the same rules concerning temporary events as any other agricultural.
Right, it wouldn't, well, you, this ordinance is a little bit more restricted than temporary outdoor events. Temporary outdoor events, a lot of times will allow you to use portable bathrooms and some things of that nature because they're gonna happen like at the most twice a year. This would require a little bit more, um, improvement.
So the, just to be clear then, the small events and large events would be a part of this ordinance and they would be, uh, allowed as, as far as the right in the zoning district?
Well, it was zoning clearance in most zone districts, yes.
Right. But the temporary event would require a permit? Separate, separate?
Completely separate permit, separate, separate, uh, process. And matter of fact, at the time the ordinance was originally done, there was a very good reason to put that in. That is something that we could look at taking out because that's covered somewhere else if it, if it seemed confusing.
Okay, 'cause right now, say on the temporary event, how many does a county allow by right to any one individual? If I was a promoter, so it's just two.
Two.
And so with this, they're asking to put a different number in there.
It's not a temporary outdoor event. What they're asking for is they're asking for unlimited gathering tasting room events? Twelve?
Yeah, that's the line. I'm, I'm saying if it's an event that's like weddings or big.
Under this, this ordinance, you could have a wedding as an event on a winery up to twelve.
Okay, 'cause that's what I'm saying. It's, they're, they're asking for.
So you could conceivably, if this ordinance, if, if it was decided that twelve was the appropriate number, you could have your twelve events and you could conceivably apply for two temporary outdoor event permits. That might be maybe four or five hundred people or exceed the limits because our temporary outdoor event permit allows that.
So, so that way they could do fourteen then?
Possibly.
Yeah.
You, you know, you have to make sure that it's appropriate and that sort of thing, but it, it would be conceivable.
They, they could have twelve weddings?
Yeah, under.
By this ordinance at any time?
Yes.
By the draft.
Without a permit.
Yes.
Without a permit. Without a permit.
Yes, that's, that is what the Vintners Association Task Force asked us to prevent, uh, to present to you. Twelve, twelve events as a matter of right and, um, unlimited small events. So that's, this ordinance that you see attached would implement their request and it's a good starting off point. Um, you may or may not decide that it's.
So I guess what I'm confused on is, uh, you know, I don't have a problem with weddings, but that, you know, that's not wine tasting. Nexus with the wine.
What, and this came up as part of the community center, um, discussion and it comes up a lot when I go to the max. Is that, the argument is, is that anytime that you can get someone onto your winery or vineyard, whether it's a wedding, whether it's a birthday party, whether it's an anniversary, even if wine tasting isn't the focal point, that's promotion of your product. Having people come into the agricultural area and enjoy your, your vineyard and your winery, that's promotion of the product. Even if it's not like a grape days of summer, come taste our wine event, that's the argument that's been, that's been put forward.
So then, then how is this different than the, uh, event center draft language?
Um, this language is more permissive than the event center language. Whether you agree with that or not, like I stated earlier, that's what we were asked to bring forward and that's what we're proposing. It is more permissive. There is, there's an existing ordinance that allows wineries to be in that zone from four point six to ten where when we went through the community center, uh, update and now the event center ordinance, it was decided that for agricultural event centers, the cutoff should be ten acres for small agricultural event centers. So you have this existing ordinance that allows four point six to ten for wineries. The board saw fit to put that in in two thousand six and two thousand eight and, and that's what we're dealing with right now.
What, what's the ten now?
Small agricultural event centers. The smallest agricultural event center started at ten acres.
Okay. And so I guess where the, uh, question is coming up is, under this ordinance, in, in the same zone, it's the event center zone. Uh, a winery can, if they have four point seven acres, can have up to, uh, two hundred people at a wedding.
It, it's conceivable, yeah.
And, uh, event centers.
Cannot.
Cannot. They'd have to go up, they'd have to have at least twenty acres and an event center would have to have a conditional use permit where this would be a matter of right.
Right.
Yeah. And so, so you can have, so you know, I guess I'm just kind of thinking of the neighbors that have been and talked to us about some of the event centers. I mean, the, uh, it's the same zone. And so, uh.
You're asking why the disparity?
Huh?
Why the disparity?
So the issues are gonna be, uh, the same.
Exactly. What I can tell you is, and, and that's why we're having these workshops. This is what we were asked to bring forward and, and we're presenting it to you. Whether it's determined to be appropriate or not, that's not for me to decide. That's, that's, I have a discussion about it and then you make recommendations for me to write the ordinance. I can tell you the board in two thousand eight wanted to foster the wine industry and they created its own ordinance. We've been asked to go back and look at that ordinance. The Vintners Association Task Force has asked us to please present their ideas and it's up to you to decide whether you think that's appropriate or not or some version of that's appropriate.
Okay, I've got another question because we got the, the, the big events and then we have the small events. Now, under the small events, I know it says dinners and stuff like that, but does that mean if somebody wanted to have a wedding with forty-five people that they could have it under the small event part of that?
It's conceivable that they could even have it as a tasting room gathering if it was all inside. Or if it had an outdoor component, it would, it would qualify as a small event.
Oh, okay. I, I guess, one of the things that I keep bumping up against on this is I, I s- I see it as, um, winery that sort, that potentially could roll in and say if they're not doing real good as winery that all of a sudden they, they're an event center. But it's just under a different ordinance. You know, versus being a winery, raising the grapes, you know, doing all that stuff.
Right.
See that, if they're in business to do that. If they're in agriculture, they, they need to work real hard at it and sometimes it could get real, real easy where it could change over. And I know, spent so much time on the event center issues and then, then with this, I see it sort of working out same thing, but being a lot more permissive, you know, to do other things.
George, doesn't the events, the centers allow many more events? Uh, the event centers do allow twenty-six more events, twenty-six events.
Ri- right. More events, but I mean, under the big event, then you add the small event, then you add the enclosed deal. You can actually do.
Three hundred and sixty-five?
Five.
I won't, I, I'm not. No, I mean, I, I, under the, under what's proposed now, you can have twelve, have the TOE and then the unlimited tasting room gatherings. That's, that's what would, would be in this, implemented by this ordinance. I, I understand the issue. It's, it's not lost on me that you, you're all skewing towards why the disparity between what we just did for community centers and wineries. And what I can tell you is, maybe you'll decide that there shouldn't be any disparity. I don't know. I've been.
And, and I don't see this disparity. I mean, as long as it relates to, to wine, the wine tasting, wine events, stuff like that. I don't have an issue with that.
Right.
It's, you know, my, my issue is where they sort of step out of what their primary business is.
Right. And, and when we discuss the community centers, it would be the same here. It's like, if you stop being a winery and you don't have vines or anything anymore, then you forfeit the right to do these other things, okay? You don't have the right to do it. If you're not an ongoing winery and you're not.
The definition of the ongoing part in the community centers, that was primarily by the ag commissioner?
Yeah, it was, it was the, it was the, um, minimum requirement to go into the Williamson Act with just forty-five hundred dollars a year. And that, um, if that stopped, that you would no longer have the ability to be an agricultural event center.
And that was it, just the forty-five hundred dollars?
Forty-five hundred dollars and.
Commissar or she, the ag commissioner didn't weigh in on whether.
Well, the ag commissioner, if, if we had a problem with it, for instance, you had an agricultural event center and it was very apparent that you, let's say you had some agricultural endeavor that had disappeared, that we would go talk to them and say, you, you're not an agricultural event center because you don't have the agricultural component that you need. And then we would probably, uh, well, not probably, absolutely bring the ag commissioner in and say, uh, Josh Huntsinger, please come with us and let's go make sure we're not seeing something incorrectly. If there's no ag, ag use here, we would, um, then if they didn't voluntarily vacate the use permit, we would bring it back to you and have a, and ask for a revocation.
And that would be determined when they applied for a temporary use, I mean, for the conditional use permit or how would, would be complaint driven? I mean, you drive by a farm and it looks like it's still working to me.
Right.
How would I know that it's not?
You, you wouldn't. We rely on, on, um, uh, voluntary compliance until we find out that something is not going right. Usually things are complaint driven. The assumption would be that, um, you are, uh, going by your conditions of approval until such time as we either find out that you're not or we get a complaint.
Any other questions right now?
I've completely lost my place where I'm at, so give me a second.
We did that on.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, I think we've gone through the charts and now we're to development and operational standards. The general standards have stayed the same. I will tell you, um, that I, I borrowed a lot of the standards from the, um, event center workshops that we just did. Um, that was for definitions. So for instance, parking, um, this would be the parking that's required, um, for wineries. Um, it's broken out as part of tasting rooms, office administration, production, storage, warehouse, and then event parking. Uh, it's very consistent with the parking standards that were put in place for, um, uh, agricultural event centers.
Can I ask a question about, uh, George?
Yes.
Um, on the event parking, uh, you have, uh, we're saying this for a minimum of four point six acres, right? Is what this applic- applies to. And, um, if you calculate, we're saying that the maximum they can have is two hundred people. Is that correct for an event? Is that what we're saying? We're capping at that. So at two and a half, uh, persons, uh, you know, per space, that's eighty spaces. On four point six acres, if you're gonna have a vineyard and a, uh, and a facility and eighty parking places, is there enough room for everything?
It's pretty tight. Might not be. But what we do have provisions for is that if you did want to occasionally have that many, that you could get, um, come through us and have an approved overflow parking area, which is not on the street, which is not on a county right of way. But if you said, you know, there's approved parking here that I have access to and I'm gonna shuttle people safely from, from X.
Right.
Over, we would, we would look at that. But, but realistically on four point six with two hundred, it, it's, it's very tight, especially if you, right now, the acreage requirement is one, one acre. Doable. You move the acreage up, if, if that's what the commission decided to do, to half the site it might not become feasible. And if that's, if you wanna move the acreage up, probably need to slide the numbers down. So these things kind of domino.
Well, with the community centers, I have the same concern.
Right.
Because I, I think it really needs to be laid out in the ordinance that both in the community centers and this, that it has to be onsite. I mean, it needs to be in bold print because otherwise they're gonna end up out on county roads, on private roads.
Right.
And there's gotta be a hammer to keep people from doing that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I'm comfortable as we go through this process, at one acre of grapes on four point six, if you need eighty parking spaces, I'm comfortable that it's tight, but it could be achieved. I'm not so comfortable if the commission said to staff, we, we would like to up the acreage to like half of four point six, it would be two point three acres. I'm no longer comfortable with that number of the events and that sort of thing. So as we go along and, and you move something here and something there, then staff has to go back and look at what, what that requires as far as an adjustment.
Well, is there an issue with stating it has to be onsite or a, you know, as you stated, an appropriate or?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely not.
Alternative site.
Yeah.
So that it's not, people are parking on the roads. Cause that just, uh, you know, it's certainly a safety issue if they're parking on the roads.
Absolutely not a problem. We can put language in that, that.
You wouldn't have to actually review much if, for example, the ordinance read that half of the acreage had to be under cultivation. One space for two point five persons would still be the same.
Yes.
Have to go back and readjust anything there and things like that.
Uh, the only thing I would have to go back and readjust is on small, on the smaller pieces of property, if, if you do have to have fifty percent of cultivation of vineyard, I, and you have a single family residential home and you have a tasting room, becoming uncomfortable with the thought that you can get eighty parking spaces, I'm fairly certain it becomes difficult.
Right, well, it would simply mean that you can't have two hundred people. You can only have a hundred and fifty.
That's what I'm saying. So you, if that's what you wanna do, then you slide back the number of people you can have as an onsite event.
Yeah, yeah, using what available space you have for parking, you just calculate back.
Just reason.
Right.
Right. And, and so those are the things as, as we go through the workshop process, as we start determining what is going to actually be in the draft ordinance that moves forward, those are things that will have to be readjusted and, and moved around.
George, how do these parking numbers, if I was going to put a tasting room in a, in a retail center, how are my parking requirements differed from, from that versus, versus this ordinance?
If you're just gonna, if you're gonna be a, a winery with a tasting room and you sold like t-shirts and things inside your tasting room, right? Is that what you're asking?
Two identical operations, one out, out by the farm, out by the barn kind of thing and one I'm gonna put in a commercial center in the middle of town. Is the parking requirements the same?
Pretty, pretty similar. Actually, I, if my memory serves me right, the tasting room requirements might be slightly more restrictive um, with regard to parking to address, uh, Commissioner Nader's concern is that a hundred, one space per a hundred square feet for a tasting room, which would be your retail location normally on a, on a winery, but at a minimum, five. So even if your tasting room is like three hundred and fifty or four hundred square feet, you still need five parking spaces. So, a little bit more restrictive than a, than, than like a retail. I believe it's, is it one to three hundred or one to one fifty, Paul? Do you know?
Retail's one to three hundred.
One to three hundred.
Which restaurant?
One to three hundred.
Parking space per every three hundred square feet and four hundred.
But is it restaurant, food or?
All right, so restaurants are one to one hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Right. And sometimes we go by table count or, 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 or counts of actual seating. Okay. Um, then we come to the number of events, um, proposed, uh, by the task force was twelve events. I have, um, in this ordinance defined small events and large events with no more than twelve of those events being large in nature. The hours of operation are very similar to the agricultural event centers. Matter of fact, they're identical. Ten to ten PM Friday and Saturday, ten to eight PM Sunday through Thursday. Noise regulations are the same as proposed for agricultural event centers with, um, them being subject to the noise ordinance until seven thirty PM until they need to, then they need to move inside to reduce the, uh, noise level to twenty decibels or less at exterior property lines. Lighting is very similar, identical again to agricultural event centers. Uh, dark sky compliant, downward shielding, minimum lighting because you're in an agricultural area. The food regulations, um. The food regulations, same for, as with agricultural event centers, if they have commercial kitchens, they're only to be used in conjunction with onsite events. Also, that these should not become standalone restaurants, as we're concerned, yes.
An event, is that, is, is the unlimited tasting considered an event?
You mean in the tasting room?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so if you come in and are tasting, then you can order off the menu from my restaurant.
I wouldn't, no, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. I thought when you're having a tasting room gathering of fifty people or fewer-
That's not considered an event?
Not considered an event.
As far as the, the kitchen usage goes?
But I would say that you could, if, if you had, you could use your kitchen facilities in conjunction with tasting room gatherings. Because you're allowed to have winemaker dinners as part of those. If you were a small winery and you had a winemaker dinner of twenty-five people inside of your tasting room, you would be allowed to use your onsite kitchen facilities for that.
It's been alleged that there is one winery that has a full-blown kitchen that is using the sort of definition of pairing wine as a sort of disguise for having a pretty ongoing restaurant. And so I think there's an opportunity for some abuse here potentially.
It's not, it's not alleged, it's, it's, it's going on.
Well, what are you gonna do about that?
Well, I'd rather not discuss that one right now. I mean, we can discuss it later, we can digress. I understand the need to make sure that that does not happen in the future.
Say, George, this, quite, quite frequently, and I don't know, maybe we're talking about the one here, I don't know. Quite frequently, you'll see wineries that have what they call a bistro. And I guess the idea is that you buy a bottle of wine and, and you buy lunch too. Would that be permitted?
I, I believe that under this ordinance, that you could have, especially that kind of bistro-ish, kind of like wine, cheese, crackers, maybe a sandwich, that sort of thing. That would absolutely be permitted. I believe that you would be able to serve food under tasting room gatherings and that sort of thing. But as I, I said through the start, it's, we're at a jumping off point. We can, you can determine and direct me that that is or is not appropriate at this point, and I can come back with alternatives for you to review.
Well, you know, I guess, I guess kind of, my view on this is, you know, we, you know, the reason they're in the business is to be economical. And if it helps them to sell their wine, to have, you know, a bistro-type food service associated with it. To me, I think that should be a permitted activity, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, anything that you would like to make a recommendation to me about, I can, I can implement as we go through this.
Well, I think if we're gonna allow that, if we're gonna open that door, it should be on fairly sizable acreage so that it isn't impacting an immediate, you know, neighbors that are around the facility. Because if it's, you know, this alleged one, and I said alleged because I haven't seen it myself, so if, if that's going on, there's a tremendous amount of traffic and activity related to that, and I think it's at least a little bit softener, softener to the community if it's on a larger parcel than, than something on four point six acres. So I, I just, I'm hoping that there's a way to tighten that up so that we don't get abuse.
Mm-hmm.
One thing might be to maintain the, if you sell the wine that you're going to have lunch with, it's gotta be made there. Can't buy it from Alameda and bring it up here and say, hey, we're selling wine, so let's have lunch. That'd be like one-
That or an acreage type deal, like you say, on a large, large enough parcel where that way on- Four point six acres, they're not having twenty, twenty-five cars every afternoon at one time, you know, right there eating.
Well, I think, I think the four point six acres, if I remember right, comes from the ag zoning. You know, four, four points, if you have four point six acres, then the ag zoning goes down to four point six. And so I think maybe ultimately in the discussion where we're talking about having large events on four point seven acres, you know, probably we do need to look at some acreages here and, and it seems like it's possible because, you know, the four point six is just, that's just kind of an arbitrary zoning criteria, and maybe in terms of impact, we should look at some other acreages. I don't know what's suggested right now, but-
Something like community event centers have.
I, I think, I think that what would be helpful the next time that we come back is that we can run some comparisons between the community, the event center draft ordinance that's there and what we have going on here, so you can see some side-by-side comparisons and, and make some judgments that way. I think that would be helpful. Especially with, with regard to event size and parcel size.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I was, I was writing a note, I, I apologize.
Quite all right.
Then we move on to tasting facilities. Essentially, the request has been that we allow tasting facilities to operate in accordance with what the state law requires right now. And that's onsite sale of bottle and glass for onsite consumption. Whereas our tasting room section of our winery ordinance says only for sampling at this point in time. We've received correspondence that states that we should have more restrictive tasting facility requirements, like tasting is six one-ounce samples within a twenty-four hour period, some things of that nature. But we were asked to present that tasting rooms just be running in accordance with state law, and that's, that's what's in this.
Yeah, well, it seems to me that where the confusion is oftentimes, and of course, people are trying to limit abusive drinkers from being on the road.
Right.
But, you know, that's the CHP and the sheriff's job, and from a county planning perspective, I don't know how you can really address people's moral values or what they-
We would not ad, address drinking and driving, because the law says you're not supposed to drink and drive.
Yeah.
If you're gonna go wine tasting, you should have someone drinking iced tea or water and not drinking. So you're right, the enforcement issue about the potential for drunk drivers is for the Platte County Sheriff's Department, California Highway Patrol, that sort of thing. It's not something that we usually would ever figure into a land use decision.
I don't know, I, I think it just, it's easier to go with the state, because it's sort of universal. So somebody coming out of the area to taste wine here would be the same, or buy wine here would be the same as if they went to Napa or down south.
Mr. Chairman, if I can real quick, clarifying the issue relating to the alleged violation, just to clarify, the board did approve food pairing with that, the sale of wine for this project, and staff has investigated this issue and found that it's consistent with the conditions of approvals. Just to clarify that.
Well, how much are they serving every day? I mean, did, did the county actually monitor the activity of the restaurant versus the winery?
You know, I don't have that, any information in front of me right now.
I, I, I can speak to it if you're interested, if, if, if you'd like to know.
Right.
Say, Paul, you said it was consistent with what? Say, Paul, I kind of missed what you said was-
It was consistent with the conditions of approval.
Okay.
Given-
Particular winery?
And, and the way it's, it's viewed, and the person who runs this winery has actually come before the commission and explained what he's doing, is that he's allowed an unlimited, if I remember right, an unlimited amount of events. And that he considers every time someone sits down in what is seemingly a restaurant and orders food and wine pairing, that that is, is a single event, and that he doesn't have waiters, because I remember, because I was sitting here when he talked to the commission about this. He has educators, wine educators. You can't buy food without wine. And that is consistent with what his approval was.
So you were gonna answer your question, how often this is happening?
I think it happens pretty consistently, sort of like a restaurant use.
Every day?
I don't know if it's every day or not. I would have to look up, I would have to get that information. That would be something that you can clearly address as part of this workshop process, that if you, if you wanna delve into that about what is or isn't appropriate, it's fine.
Okay, let's, let's move on then, George.
Okay, so the next, the next issue is not much to talk about, I don't think. It's the same carryover about potable water, waste disposal. Then you get into eleven, which is the continuing applicability of minor use permits, no changes there. And then I did leave the special noticing requirements for wineries that do require minor use permits and A R Ps, that's still in there. It's pretty self-explanatory about what happens with regard to notice of decisions and, and that sort of thing.
George, we're not asking that, as they have these twelve events, that they have to come in and do any kind of an application process for those events?
No, the only thing that they would require is, is zoning clearance, which isn't a typical application. But if you were going to have these events, you would have to have the infrastructure, the parking, all those things in place. If not, you would not be in compliance with the ordinance.
So when they're gonna have an event, they don't have to inform you or inform the county of that event?
Not as required-
So I guess-
By this ordinance.
What my concern is, is how is that monitored? I mean, we can say twelve, but, you know, they could be having twenty-four or whatever. I wish, and I know this has been proposed by some of the emails and letters that you got, that there was some, and you referenced it earlier, that there was some simplified form of application for each one of these larger, I would say events are probably the bigger issue. And if they're, you know, in this day of electronic age, it would, you know, it would seem like if, it would be good if they were registered with the county. And that if they could go online and do something like that to get an approval. And then based on, you know, well, it's, you know, it's just an application process. And if there was a way to track how many events that they have had to make sure that they're still in compliance with the twelve, maybe that's a little bit more involved. But then they also require them to post on, at the interest of their property whenever they're going to have a larger event so that the neighbors are aware of that, of the date, the time, you know, the length of the event, sort of thing. I, I'm just trying to be sensitive to the neighbors next door and to make sure that there isn't abuse going on of having more events than they should be having.
Yeah, so you're looking for some more accountability, more line, more online tracking, something.
If there's some way to do that.
Staff can look into, to some options for that. I'm not, I'm not totally sure how to do that, but I'll, I'll come up with some, some solution.
Because I'm not trying to create more work for the wineries or for the county. If there was some simple process of doing that so that it's monitored, you know, that would be great.
Okay. Well, let me ask you this one, if they, do they, they don't register at the county now for an event, correct?
Most of them, if they're having events, the ordinance requires an A R P for six promotional events.
Okay.
And almost all instances.
And under the proposal now, from the Benner's Association, they would have twelve by rights, so to speak, without having to apply for the permit, yes?
Essentially, yes.
Okay, now, when, or how does the county know that these people are, a winery allowed this many events? I mean, how is it that we would go in and say, okay, we got the twelve parking lots?
You mean-
If somebody just had the event, didn't tell anybody, and said, well, this is one of the twelve that I'm having, how would the county know that that's actually the case, that they're applying underneath this?
It goes back to the whole accountability issue. We wouldn't necessarily, there could be abuses. It would be something that we would have to handle as part of the enforcement process.
Right, but what I'm, I'm saying is, to verify that they have enough parking spaces or sufficient bathrooms or whatever, how do we know this without somebody complaining about it?
The, the, the one thing that we would do is, is when someone came in for a business license, if they said they're gonna have events, we'd, we'd ask these questions.
Let's say they have a business license, they're not looking for another one.
They're not looking for another one, then I, I would-
How do we know that they're currently supplying what we're requiring?
We might not. We, we might not.
Okay, that's what I was afraid of.
Yeah, we might not. I think that's the end of the actual ordinance. I did wanna go over, if, if, if you, if you don't mind, did I sense that you wanna take a break?
Five minutes, and then I'll open it to public comment, and we can get to people here to let us know how to think about it, all right?
I was just gonna go over some correspondence, but I think we covered most of it. It, it talked about a lot of concerns, we, we got correspondence about things. I can, I can move it in as we, as we-
As we go through it. Okay. Yeah, we'll take five minutes and then I'll open it up to the public and we'll hear what you guys have to say about it, all right? Thank you. Thank you.
This is on, there it is. My name's Lori Lewis, I live at sixty-two forty-five Wise Road. As you guys are familiar, I've been before you several times. My primary concern, both with the event centers and with the wineries, is enforcement. The event center proposal that has been done by the county left out code enforcement in the documentation, so I have nothing, no guidelines on what I have to protect. And to quote George, balance needs of everyone. I'm sitting here this morning thinking, I don't see any balance. I see no balance at all, because there's no addressing code enforcement in the ordinance. There's no, if they violate this, they lose this. There's nothing like that. It's open to interpretation. That doesn't suit my needs. If I didn't have a prior problem with the lack of code enforcement with my three prior complaints, that went nowhere until I went and spoke at the Board of Supervisors, and then was instructed to meet with Mr. Johnson, is when I finally got my resolution, my problem. I had filed three complaints with code enforcement. So my, my concern is not with the wineries, my concern is not with the event centers. I'm glad to see all of this going on, but what my need is, is enforcement for when these people go out, for when these businesses go outside of the line and take advantage of the hard work that you guys have outlined, and there's no enforcement. I'm not familiar with conditions or by rights. By rights concerns me because I'm not sure if that's enforceable. If you give somebody something by rights, that concerns me because it sounds like it takes my rights away. George mentioned that any type of looking into something is usually looked into by complaints. I can't say that I had that response with my three complaints. I attended and participated in good faith, the workshops for the event center, and I will for the winery as well. But what concerns me is the county presents something publicly on their idea and what they propose, and then when it comes out in a document form, it's gone. An example is, George spoke before you and said that he did not recommend event centers on private roadways. I thought that would be put in there, and I thought that was a good idea. Well, when it came out, it was not. It was two county personnel that would decide if an event center went on a private roadway. So I come to you in good faith. I participate in the workshops only to find documentation that doesn't support what is spoken at the public hearings. I have a lot of concerns about that. So again, my issue was with the county for not presenting my balance needs for enforcement. Thank you, gentlemen.
Tina Wilkins, Vina Castellano Winery. I'd just like to suggest that there's a simple solution to dealing with all of these issues. I hear you guys talking about weddings and outlining these very specific types of things, and I have an answer for a lot of those, but there's a noise ordinance, and that should protect people. If the noise ordinance was enforced, and maybe you fine, make a, a fine, maybe a one-time warning, and, and then issued a fine, that probably would take care of the problems that are associated with events. But as far as what, like, I'll address weddings, for instance. Here's where weddings do promote the wine region. Weddings, more than any other event, bring people from other towns and other places out to wineries who would otherwise not be there. They then go back to their towns, and they tell people about them and, and so forth. Anybody that's done weddings knows that the last thing you want to do to promote your winery, or have to do to promote your winery, is to have weddings, because they are a lot of work. Everything that the wineries are currently doing with events is for one purpose only, to bring people onsite to sell their wine, because the traffic on our thirteen-year-old trail is slow, 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 much slower than any other region in California. So a noise ordinance, if, if, you know, I agree with the lady there, if, if you're not enforcing what's already there, yeah, but a noise ordinance that's enforced and a fine would stop most of the problems. Because what I'm understanding is, the problem is that neighbors are feeling infringed upon. So what difference does it make if a winery is having something that is selling their wine and promoting, and it's affecting nobody? I don't, I don't get what the intent of is, what if people do something, you know, what if they have thirteen events or fourteen events? If nobody complains about it, if it's not hurting anybody, if it's only adding commerce to the winery and adding promotion by way of people leaving and going off, if there aren't DUIs, if there aren't real problems, why is it a problem? Why are we trying to create a Gestapo-like, we have to enforce something that isn't a problem? I do agree that noise after hours and after a certain level is intrusive to people that might live next door, but enforcing the noise ordinance and then maybe adding something like a fine, might solve your problem without having to do all of the other details that really are frankly not enforceable.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Phil Maddox, I'm the owner of Lone Buffalo Vineyards, and I'm also here representing the Ventners Association. I want to clear up a couple of things right at the outset here, that, that seemed to me to be some misunderstandings, perhaps. First of all, before I do that, I want to thank George and the Planning Department for initiating this process, because they recognized that there were problems with the ordinance as it exists. And if you take a look at the definition of events in the ordinance, it is just practically unenforceable, because this is so vague. And what we wanted to do as the Ventners Association is bring some certainty to that so that we could define events. And what we did, first of all, I think there's been some confusion here as to who brought this, these recommendations forward. And speaking of the recommendations, I, I have here for, for the, for the board copies of the actual recommendation by Ventners Association. Does each one of you get one of these and take some look at it? And I, and the way the format is set up, it's set up with the existing ordinance, and then our proposed changes, so you can look right there and see what they are. But th- these are not, there's been talk of a winery task force. The winery task force is something that was actually promoted and started by the county, and, and certainly the members of that task force that are county employees or heads of county departments or supervisors far outnumber the number of wineries that are on that commission. So this, these, these recommendations were presented to that task force, but they did not, and we actually worked in conjunction with everybody to try to develop some of these things. Before I go any further, there, there's, there's a point that I really think needs to be driven home here, certainly based on the questions that all of you gentlemen have raised, and based on the fact that this, this whole process, we have the community or the event center ordinance and the winery ordinance sort of proceeding on a parallel tract here. I think everybody needs to keep in mind that there is a fundamental difference between an event center and a winery that does events. And, and it's this, it's really pretty simple if you think about it. An event center is a commercial operation that derives its income from putting on events. And it's, it's, I think admirable in the proposed event center ordinance, that for some of those event centers that are located in the ag zone, there's been a, a proposal or a requirement, actually, that there be some agricultural activity. But the problem there is, that's not what drives the event centers. With wineries, it is agricultural driven. It's an agricultural product, it's produced into wine, which is, again, an agricultural product, and that is the primary business of the, of the winery, not events. The reality is that, especially at the stage of development of the wine industry in this county, unless the wineries are allowed to do promotional events, they will never, you will never have a viable wine industry in this county, and you will lose millions, potential millions of dollars of economic benefit to the county. And so, so I, I would go so far as to suggest that when these things finally get down to actually being things that are considered here, that you even consider exempting wineries from the event center project. We are, these things are more liberal, but they're not liberal enough as they're proposed by the draft ordinance here. And the, the thing that I think is appropriate, and I'm really glad to see, and I think it's really come out well from the Planning Commission, is that, that our recommendations in terms of defining events were accepted. In other words, start trying to, stop trying to figure out what an event is and define it by the number of people that attend the event and the venue. Because that's, you're really looking at what the effect the event has that way, not, you know, what, what we're calling it and so on. So we're glad to see that. But I think the restrictions that have been suggested in this draft ordinance are really over-restrictive. And I, I really, okay. And I, I, I think that there's several things here, and I realize we'll have further choices, chances when this goes along, and I think once you've read the, I, I heard some things being, being expressed by you about, you know, can you do this with this and so on? And I think one thing that's key in our recommendations as opposed to what the draft ordinance is in here, is that there was a, a, essentially a preamble, I guess you'd call it, in the definition of a promotional event, which really, I think, answers a lot of your questions about having somebody come in and not, you know, go out of business as a winery and these kind of things. We left that in. The Planning Department took it out, and I don't know why. So I, I'd appreciate it if you would. Thank you.
Hi, Jeff Evans, Bear River Winery. I wasn't going to get up here, but after the discussion about bottling plant, I thought I, I'd at least try to get up here and dispel some misconceptions here. So I have an ABC license for wine growing, and that's not grape growing, it's wine growing. And wine growing actually is an, an ag, it's, it's biochemistry, basically. You're inoculating crushed fruit with a living yeast organism or living bacteria also, and, and then you're growing wine over a period of several weeks, can take as long as fourteen, twenty-one days if you're doing extended maceration. Some people are really good at viticulture, which is growing grapes. Some people are really good at anology, wine making, which is taking that fruit and producing wine out of it. With us, we're not a bottling plant. I mean, we, we bottle one bottle of wine at a time, we're producing less than five hundred cases a year, we're, we're a, a micro winery. But my passion is about growing wine, and not so much growing fruit, and I, I know that I'm going to be, we, we intend to plant a vineyard because it's a, it's a lower cost for sourcing your fruit than purchasing it from somebody who has a, a large vineyard operation, selling it for thousands of dollars. Cabernet, you can, you can spend five thousand dollars a ton for, for grapes. And there's also a scale issue, though, with vineyards. If you have one acre, you, you put a lot of extra resources and dollars into trying to keep that one acre of grapes going, versus if you have, you know, ten thousand acres and you're growing grapes, there's an economy of scale there where you can produce fruit really cheaply. And so that benefits people like me, I can go buy, you know, I'm sourcing grapes in El Dorado County from Vianney Vineyards. He's a vineyard with no winery. There's lots of examples of wineries with no vineyards in this region, like Nevada City Winery in, in Nevada County. They don't have a vineyard, they purchase grapes, they make wine, and a lot of people buy their wine. And there's a lot of examples of, you know, wineries that don't have vineyards, vineyards that don't have wineries. It's just, it's just that simple. So anyway, I just wanted to get up there and express that, that wine making isn't just bottling. Wine making is actually taking sugar, converting it to ethanol with a living organism, wine growing. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? The one thing that I did want to, and seeing Mr. Evans up there reminded me, in our zone district charts, there is an interpretation specifically with regard to, to the winery that he has, Bear River Winery, that we allowed wineries in resort zone district, and that's not shown on the charts in this ordinance, and that would be, that would be a modification that will be made next time, is that wineries would be allowed in, in resort.
Don't start me now, I'm not even there yet. And I've got lots to say, as you well know. I'm Carol Rubin from Newcastle, I represent Safe Placer Farmlands, and I, I submitted, which I hope all of you have had a chance to read, a detailed comment on, that's going to support everything that I say with references to the ordinance, and, and also contains some suggestions on how we might be able to make this work. I, I just want to say, if you adopt this winery ordinance as it's written, it gives wineries privileges over all other agriculture and private citizens in Placer County. But that's okay, because under this ordinance, nearly all of us can be wineries too. So let me run down what you have to do to be a winery in ag zoning under this ordinance. You can plant, either plant an acre of grapes, as has been mentioned, or you can get what's called a functional equivalency, and I think that might be what Jeff was alluding to, where you pretty much label somebody else's bottle of wine. And I know that Cask, Cask Winery was, was given a functional equivalency to be a winery at the Flower at the Flower Farm, for instance. So I know there's at least one. Then you submit your application under a zoning clearance. And this is something we've got to fix, guys, because a zoning clearance means your neighbors don't even get notified of your application. No public hearings are held, and the planning director has to decide on your application within five days. So you are fast-tracked and nobody, nobody next door, even if you share access, is going to know what's going on. So once you have your winery, under this ordinance, here's what you could do. You could sell any amount of wine, not only your own, from anywhere in the world, by the glass or the bottle, just as any bar does. You can serve meals at your tasting room at any time, just as a restaurant does. Well, restaurants and bars are not permitted uses in ag zoning. So what are we going to do here? We going to say you can run a restaurant and a bar de facto, as long as we call it a winery? Or you're going to let us have an IHOP that has an acre of grapes out back by the parking lot, and all of a sudden, hey, they get to be a winery too? You can hold unlimited events of any kind at your tasting room, and there's no limit on the size of the tasting room. You can do all of this from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM on weekdays and until 10:00 PM on weekends. You can be located wherever you want, even if you share access with other properties. Because remember, the neighbors aren't even going to know you applied for a permit. So as others have alluded, for the past six months, Placer County has been holding workshops to define event centers and develop regulations for their establishment in rural areas. Adoption of this revised winery ordinance will make that event center ordinance irrelevant by giving any approved winery the right to hold unlimited events. Other rural residents, even other agricultural producers, will have no voice in what's happening in their neighborhoods and have to cope with the noise, traffic, and undesirable behavior. And, and just to say, comment on what Ms. Wilkins said, it's not just noise, it's traffic. Especially if you get three or four of these things along the Gold Hill Wise Road corridor, which is what we're looking at right now. These businesses rightly belong, bars and restaurants and event centers, in population centers, not in farmland. This ordinance is not about the right to grow grapes, the right to make and sell wine, or the right to run tasting rooms, all of which we would support. The wineries are demanding special privileges to operate bars, restaurants, and event center in agricultural zoning without public notice or review. One stated purpose of this winery ordinance, right up in the front, is to protect the agricultural character and long-term agricultural production of agricultural lands. You ask yourselves, how does this draft ordinance protect the development of agricultural lands? And I just want to say, we've said several times, we would be happy to sit down with the counties and the wineries and try and find at least some common ground where we could agree with them. But instead, this proposal was written with the sole input of the wine industry. Thank you.
My name is Marilyn Jasper, and I'm speaking on behalf of Sierra Club and Public Interest Coalition. I, I think you might have gotten correspondence from us, a draft. Unfortunately, time, it's a little rough, and I apologize for that. And I'm not going to go through every single item that's included in that. I know this has been alluded to as a starting point, and I know George has done a lot of work on it and been very open with it. But to some of us rural residents, it feels like the go-gun, we were told the race would start at eight, and the go-gun went off at 4:00 AM. We didn't, this is, this has moved a lot farther than some of us feel we had any input with. I, I realize that in the staff report that you received, these, what are in there are concerns that moved staff to reexamine, reexamine the existing winery ordinance to determine if an amendment was warranted. Yes, I think probably there are some amendments that would be warranted, but not what you, they are not. We would not agree with most of what is in that proposed draft winery ordinance amendment. We don't believe that the existing winery ordinance is too restrictive. It needs to be tightened for enforcement. I don't think there's any question about that. Some of the things that I was going to cover have already been, have already been mentioned. The minimum parcel size of 4.6. I don't know how a winery could be a viable winery with that, when in the county general plan, I believe it talks about 10 acres being a viable size for ag, a baseline standard. And the other is the one planted acre of grapes. Doesn't say anything about having those live. You plant them, that's all you have to do. And so there's, it's, it's stuff like that. And why that's important, the little item that I just handed, which I don't have copies for each of you. On one of the standards, D1B, which is on page, well, it's 17 in Attachment B, it talks about, I just want to point out one, but there are really more than this. Retail sales of wine fruit products shall be limited to those produced, fine, vintage, fine, cellared. And, and the key word here is or grown. So a winery can do any one of these things and be a winery. Cellar, I can have wine from other areas. I don't, I don't have to, my great, my vineyard, my grapevines do not have to go into this. Or bottled. I can have wine bottled elsewhere and slap my label on it. And these are the things that don't support agriculture as what this whole thing is supposedly premised on. The goal is to sell wine, and we hope that happens. That's not the issue. But we think there are many venues in Placer County right now that are doing that. The Flower Farm's already been mentioned. We have, the High Hand Nursery has some tasting rooms. Auburn has some. Lincoln now has one. I think there are venues, they could be co-ops, where wine and tasting, wine sales and tasting could all take place in more appropriate zones than rez ag. Last, I, we, I had a lot more, but you've, I really appreciate what you folks seem to have, you've exhibited a grasp of the problems, and that's half the battle. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stuart Perry. I own a Fawn Ridge Winery in Auburn here. I would like to mention, I am also on the board of the Wine Institute in California. This is a firm going back to early 1900s that advocates for the wine industry throughout the world, if not California. I'm getting kind of lost. I, I'm under the impression that the commission is to review land use, and I understand some of the activity relates to that. But you're getting information from people that are not informed. I don't want to take up hours and hours of your time to, to provide information about the laws of California, all right? But Commissioners' laws concern about a bottling plant. A bottling plant is licensed by the state of California. A winery that's bonded and given a wine grower's license and O2 status is required to produce 50% of its stock. So this whole notion that everybody's going to bring in thousands of cases of wine to sell retail out of a, a little podunk tasting room somewhere here in our county in the farm zone is, it's just not, it's just preposterous. It's, it's illegal by virtue of California law, if not inevitably impossible financially. So I'd, I'd like to go back to the agricultural connection that all of us have here in Placer County. We've all planted our vineyards, and if we haven't planted vineyards, they're planned. To develop a vineyard these days, you're looking at 20 to $30,000. The idea that someone's going to come in and spend 20 or $30,000 and let their plants die, or play games around trying to make millions of dollars doing that, is, is just not in reality, I don't think. Now, that is my personal opinion, but I think if you take a step back and look at the finances involved, if I want to do a restaurant, I'm going to go to town and do a restaurant. If someone's visiting my winery and I want to give them food, they've taken up the parking place, have they not? They've created the traffic already, have they not? So what they're doing on the premises with respect to wine cheese or wine without the cheese doesn't seem to be a lot different to me. So if we're worried about the impact of traffic or noise, as Tina Wilkins says, we have a nine, we have a, an ordinance already for noise. And I can tell you right now, if we did a, a traffic survey, we're, we're well within the, the bounds of other commercial areas throughout Placer County. If you're going to bring in another couple of shopping centers, we won't move on Highway 49 out here. So with traffic mitigation and, and those issues, you know, my neighbors aren't complaining. So if my neighbors aren't complaining, why do I need to, to comply with a bunch of regulations that probably aren't really necessary? So I invite any of you to give me a call or stop by. I'm happy to walk you through all the state regulations that were required to follow. There are many. So thank you for your time.
Is your operation in commercial or residential ag?
Mine's in farm zone.
In a farm zone? It is in farm, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Hi, Josh Hunsinger, Placer County Agricultural Commissioner. Just try to keep this brief, but add my two cents and try to answer a few things. Just to give you a little bit of a picture of our wine industry overall at this point, it's a, somewhere in the ballpark of 200 acres of grapes overall in the county, maybe a little more than that. And so it's, it's very, very small, just as comparison. El Dorado County has about 2,500 acres of grapes. Amador has about 4,000 acres of grapes. What's different from those counties is that we do have very, very small parcels that have retained their farm zoning. In a lot of other wine-growing regions, the minimum parcel size is, you know, much larger, 20, 40 acres is more typical. And so I think the economic viability standpoint, that, that does make it difficult and somewhat unique in our county. To characterize our industry, our overall grape crop is, as it sits on the vine, worth somewhere in the neighborhood of a million dollars. Maybe a little less than that, depending on the year and how good a crop it is. It might be a little more if it's a really heavy crop that year. However, we, last year ran some just extremely rough ballpark numbers on the value and just the gross value of the wine that's produced by those grapes in the county, and it's somewhere more in the neighborhood of $7 million. So it gives you an idea of why, when we talk about agriculture and we talk about wine, you know, it'd be easy to say, well, why don't the growers just grow grapes and sell those grapes somewhere else? That's why you get about a sevenfold increase in the gross value of that agricultural commodity when it is processed and sold in a bottle rather than sold in a, as a bin of grapes. I think a lot of this also fundamentally comes down to the existing definition of an event. And the struggle I see, you know, working with the wineries on a daily basis, is that the definition of event in the current ordinance is so broad that almost anything other than someone driving up, sitting at the tasting room and, and tasting wine, anything beyond that virtually is considered an event right now. We've, I've seen examples of winemaker dinners that had 10 people at them, and yet that's considered an event. And it'd be hard to argue that 10 people sitting inside in a building is, I think, the intent of what the event, you know, what, what we'd consider an event for the purposes of impact on the neighbors and stuff. I, I attended and actually spoke at a, an event in what would be considered an event, which was, our Placer County Board of Realtors had a little get-together, which they do often, to talk about different issues. And they had one on rural issues, and that invited me to talk. It was 20 people standing around, having some hors d'oeuvres, and, you know, sampling wine and then discussing the real estate issues. And, you know, I really struggle that that is considered an event. So, you know, kind of as an alternative to get lost in the minutia of, how many is it? 12? Is it 14? Is it less? And what's a big event? What's a small event? I would just, you know, my two cents is to really focus on that definition of an event and clearly define things that are not an event because they don't have that potential to impact the neighbors and stuff, while still allowing the winery to get exposure and to be used on a more frequent basis, and allow that, that economic viability, because they do depend on the public coming out to their, to their wineries. I did give suggestions, George, which is purely mine. I, I know the wineries have some concern about increasing the grape acreage. And I think that is something I personally feel strongly about, because it will increase that agricultural nature. I'm the one that has to police the verification of that. I will tell you that typically, the wineries that don't meet the current acre standard are sourcing, in every instance I've seen, and I wrote a compliance letter confirming it's, the majority of it is grapes from other grape growers in Placer County. Sometimes they do buy grapes from El Dorado County or Nevada County, or even outside of those areas. But typically, it's mostly Placer County grapes. We do have another vineyards that don't have wineries attached to them, and their sole business is to sell grapes to other grape or winemakers. We also have a significant number of grapes that get shipped out of the county. There's bottles of wine down in Sonoma and Napa Counties and elsewhere that are Placer County grapes in those bottles. So it goes both ways, and that's a pretty standard practice within the industry. So I'm glad we're working on this, and, and I, I know we'll hopefully have something that's palatable to the public and also helps our wine industry continue to grow and thrive and become more economically viable. Thank you.
I'm Peter Stafford from Forest Hill. I'm not affiliated with any winery. I'm just, you know, my wife and I, we enjoy visiting wineries. And it's been interesting hearing all of the comments and the reports here on this proposed rewrite of the ordinance. I do notice the staff investigated what some other counties in Californias have done, like Amador County, Sacramento County, and Santa Barbara County. It seems to me that some of the concerns about accidents or DUI, I wonder if the staff perhaps has looked into the comparable rates of those incidents in counties like Amador and Santa Barbara and Sacramento that do allow wines to be sold by the glass or the bottle and consumed on the premises, even though that's not presently the policy in Placer County. I think if you found that though, if there wasn't any significant difference in their rate of DUI or accident rates compared to Placer County, is that that's probably not an issue of significant, you know, it's not an impediment to allowing that to occur in Placer County. As far as the wording of the proposed ordinance, there's obviously some tweaking that needs to be done. I'm certainly not nearly as educated on this as, you know, owners of wineries, and I don't have, I may feel differently if I was an adjoining landowner, so I don't want to be disrespectful to anybody who, you know, feels that they may be adversely affected. But I think generally, by approving a more permissive type of winery activity under the draft, maybe not exactly as it's worded in the draft here, but along the lines approaching that, would certainly carry into effect existing county policies like Policy 7C4 and 7C6 to help promote that. So, thank you.
Okay, well, seeing no one else, I'll close that part of the public comment workshop. Bringing it back here to the commission, any questions for any of the staff?
Gentlemen? No. Okay, in that case, I want to thank all the public for attending and sharing your ideas.
George was kind of looking for some feedback.
Just a touch, just a touch, and when I come back, I'm not slinging blind.
All right.
Say I got a couple, a minute or two. Right now, the way the cows... Right now, the way the county is, if you have a piece of property that's owned shopping center, and you want to build a shopping center on it, you still need a conditional use permit. You still have to have site-specific review. It's not just an entitlement because it's owned that way, because of the potential impact it can have on the rest of the community around it. I think some sort of initial approval needs to kind of go along with some of these upfront, if it's not an event-by-event thing, which I could see could get too tedious and too much, but at least an initial site-specific review for, for each individual project that wants to take advantage of this. And, and when I say take advantage of it, in many cases, this is better than commercial zoning. If you want to build a project like this on a commercial piece of property, your parking lot needs to be paved, you need grease interceptors, you need lighting and landscaping and all kinds of very expensive improvements to that site that the agricultural operator doesn't get hit with. So it is, it is truly, I think, a fantastic opportunity to, to get much more use out of an agricultural piece of property than anybody probably moving next door to an agricultural piece of property might assume would be happening there. I'd like to see things addressed regarding, I guess, who's operating it. Can you, can you lease your commercial kitchen out to a restaurant operator and sub-lease your grape operator and just become a commercial landlord on your agricultural property, more or less? I think there's, you know, there's, there's some areas here that, that are ripe for abuse, and minus adequate enforcement, which isn't under the discretion of, of the commission, I think it needs, unfortunately, some additional regulations to keep it in check.
Well, I like that, that comment you made, that it's not under our purview for the enforcement part. What, what would you suggest something like on that? Just as an example, Jeff?
Well, for example, it seems to me that a majority of the complaints regarding violations occur on evenings and weekends when there's no code enforcement staff available to respond. So it, it, it puts us in the position of wanting to pile on more regulations, additional noise ordinances, and additional screenings in earlier hours than, than the privately, private neighbor has, has the right to operate on his property. I'm not a big fan of more regulations. I, I think we've got plenty of rules in place, assuming we can enforce them. But unfortunately, we can add on regulations, we can't regulate the enforcement side here, so we want to go that direction.
Okay. Anything else to?
I think there are a lot of activities that are approved by right in the county with zoning clearance. And so I don't, at least, you know, George can probably help me out here, but I don't think this is really out of the ordinary in the farm zone. Now, if it's in a residential agricultural area, then there is a permitting process required, but in the farm zone, the idea is they're selling an agricultural product, and that's always been something that can happen in the farm zone. So, so at any rate, I think that was the foundation when this was written several years ago. And so to get into a lengthy permitting process, you know, I think I would, would not be in favor of that.
My concern is, would, has really been enforcement as well, and how do, how do you deal with that? My, I'm wondering, George, could you address what, one of the comments that was made is that if somebody wants a winery, they, they just can go ahead and do that, basically? And it seems to me that there should be at least some initial review, especially as it relates to that they're going to have events, that they have the capacity to deal with the, the parking issues that would come with that.
What I would tell you is, there, as we sit now, there is that accountability, because most of the things, if you wanted to have promotional events, you needed administrative review permit, okay? So the existing ordinance has that now. It, it, like I said, if, if you were to go with something similar to what's proposed, that catch wouldn't be there. You would be relying on, on making sure that when someone comes in for a business license or things like that, that they have the appropriate things in place. Can there be abuse? I, I would be lying if I said, no, there can't be abuse, because we all know, we've all been around long enough to know that there's land use abuses, and we have code enforcement, and we have all those sorts of things. I do think I'm getting over, over sort of a feeling that we might need to maybe, at least when I come back, have some ideas about how to up the accountability to make sure these things get done. There's several different ways you could do it. I think I just need to think of all of them and then bring them back and present them to you with a comparison of event centers and, and wineries and that sort of thing, and let you kind of hash them out and, and give me a direction.
My big concern has been with the, the larger events. You know, under, you know, I think Josh was referencing like 20 to 25 people, that's, to me, I don't even classify that as an event. But I think when you get into larger events where you have obviously more traffic, the more opportunity for noise, other things that can impact the neighbors, that's where I really think that we have to be really sensitive to how they are being accountable to that. And there are some mechanisms in place to, to make sure that they're not stepping outside of the bounds of what they should be doing.
So, is there a comfort level with like, inside the tasting room? If you have events inside the tasting room with no outside component? And is there a comfort level with thinking that that's maybe appropriate or not?
Well, we talked about in, at event centers, or community centers, that if they, if the event was inside, we gave some different parameters to how that could be handled, and I would assume that we could sort of apply something on this with this.
We could, right.
I mean, that's sort of my thought.
Yeah, and those are all things, I'll, when I come back next time, I'll have, now that I kind of know the direction we're going in, I can start narrowing it down. Okay. We'll be watching for you.
Can't wait.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the meeting for today. Thank you so much for coming.